It is now six forty. I'm gonna call the McGuffey School Committee meeting to order. Thank you for being patient with us. We're running a little bit behind. And with that, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Oberg.
Hey, Mr. President. Good evening to Board of Directors, our administrative team in attendance, and members of the McGuffey School community, also attendance. We have six items for the committee report this Thursday evening. First, I'm gonna have Ms. Alice Waldo, Middle School Assistant Principal, come up. And we have Students of the Month for April and for May. So, Ms. Waldo.
Everyone, and good evening. So, yeah, so I'm Ms. Waldo. I'm the Assistant Principal of the Middle School. And I'm honored to introduce our two Students of the Month. So, our... Now it's on. Now it's on. Well, you could all hear me at least, right? Okay, so I wanna start first with our April Student of the Month, and that is Mr. Ricky Cosick. So, we're so proud of you, wanna come up? Have the plaque for you. And then our May Student of the Month is Ms. Gia Brock, but she had the choir concert, so she had to head to that. She had to leave early. But I have a video for us to watch.
Excuse me, but, parents, please come up here if you would like to take pictures. If you'd wanna get a better picture, there's no problem with that.
We also take pictures afterwards, too, but they can do that, too, of course. Oh, okay, I gotta get out. Oh, wait, I forgot. So, Mrs. Tildor, I apologize. Our life... This is Mrs. Tildor. Can you say some really nice of these students?
No, that's okay. Hi, I'm Nan Tildor. I am the life of the middle school and the high school and the April school to me. So, first, I'm gonna start with Gia. Gia's at the chorus concert right now. Gia is... That includes everyone. Gia stands out because she has special disabilities. She takes the time to understand how my students... She gives patience and respect. She is a good friend, peer, and founder of powerful kindness to be. And that's something she talks about in the video that you'll see. And then Ricky. Ricky is one of my... Ricky is kind and permanent. Despite the daily challenge that he faces, he always has a smile on his face. His achievements may not always look the same as other students, but his character and determination shines through. Ricky shows empathy with not only his peers, but he's loving. He always needs a hug or a different person. Ricky earned Student of the Month not just but for who he is as a parent.
I'm here with the McGuffey School, and I'm also editor. I think I should introduce you our Students of the Month. So, yay, we're so excited. Month of April, we have Ricky Cosick. And then for the month of May, we have Gia Brock. So, congratulations. Yay, good job. All right, you ready for questions?
Yeah.
All right, question one. So, we'll start with you over here. What is your name, grade, and reason?
My name is Gia Brock. I'm sixth grade, and I live all over.
Okay, what's your name?
I'm in sixth.
What grade are you in?
I'm sixth and...
What do you enjoy about being at school?
Dancing and having fun and listening to Michael.
Okay. You said dancing and having fun and listening to Michael. Michael is Michael Jackson, by the way. Right?
Yeah.
Think Michael Jackson. All right, next question. What do you like to do outside of school, hobbies, sports, early activities, Gia?
I do football, basketball, and tennis.
All right, Ricky, what do you like to do outside of school?
I do basketball, and I do soccer.
And what do you like to do at home? Where's...
Nineties, eighties, and two thousand movies.
You love movies from the eighties, nineties, and two thousands. All right, and Gia, what is your favorite subject and why?
I like people that like writing.
Okay. Ricky, is there a teacher or staff member who has helped you a lot this year?
The course secretary and Mr....
And me, all right. And what's something that we've helped you with?
Math and music.
All right, thank you, and hard school. What about you, Gia? Who is a teacher or staff member that has helped you a lot this month?
Miss Johnson, not her, because they make me feel welcome.
All right, Ricky, what is something you're proud of that you accomplished this whole year?
I remember two years.
Okay, so moving from the elementary school to the middle school. And what's something you enjoy about middle school?
Dancing and listening to Michael.
Okay. He loves Michael, and he loves to dance. And there's middle school dances. He's gotten to go to those. He's really enjoyed that this year. Yeah? Was it bedtime and everything, Ricky?
Yes.
All right. And last question for you, then, Gia. So, what advice would you give to other students who want to be Student of the Month in the future?
Be kind to everyone.
Very good. Be kind. All right, we wanna clap around a little. Yay! So, make sure you get them a big round of applause.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. So, yes, this moment, a round of applause. Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, we have some things that are happening in the district. We have Dr. Chet Dwell, who is our Middle School Principal. Maybe a little less here, but again, as you heard, there are also talks going on this time. So, after this, we have an update that I don't enjoy in the high school, middle school, or school session. So, we're part of all.
All right. I can't beat that. That's hard to follow. Our, uh, our middle school video crew is doing a phenomenal job putting those videos together, and it's turned into a great thing for us. Um, so, I'll read. I'm gonna read right from the, uh, the sheet here, uh, from Maeve Catola. So, "Good evening, and on behalf of student council, I will be reading some school updates. McGuffey students will be volunteering at Pike Days this weekend. Students have been completing keystones and advanced placement testing this week on campus. Our prom was a big hit at the Trolley Museum venue, with over three hundred students attending with trolley rides, wonderful food tables, and coffee trucks provided by the Farmhouse Bakery in Claysville, which is run by the Culverton Sisters, who are proud McGuffey graduates. There is also a DJ... And a charact- a charactrist. Our prom queen was Sarah Brownlee, and our prom king was Logan Mussalino. Tomorrow is the American Cancer Society Relay for Life on campus, sponsored by the National Honor Society. Students will be walking to raise money for cancer research with a dunk tank concession stand, a huge event grill donated by Range Resources for hot dogs and burgers, DJ, all for a great cause. And also, Mrs. Bruce's Room in the Middle School raised five hundred and nine dollars. So, middle schools contributing to that, too. A nine hundred dollars total of the middle school raise. The band concert was a big success last week, and the chorus concert is tonight in the auditorium. The FFA Award Celebration is next Friday during the school day. Western area graduation is tonight, and Penn commercial graduation is next Thursday evening. Our awards day is Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at nine a.m., and baccalaureate is May twenty-ninth at seven, and commencement is May thirtieth at seven. This year, we will have two faculty speakers chosen by majority of the class of two thousand twenty-five. They are Mrs. Linda Amaterio and Mr. Andy Macbeth. Will proudly serve as our faculty speakers for commencement. They also are retiring, so that's a nice touch for that. Sports updates. The baseball team concluded its season with a twelve and eight overall record and qualified for the Whipple playoffs, where they were ultimately defeated by Sadie Side Academy on Monday. The softball team currently holds a twelve and six record and has secured a spot in the WPL playoffs as the second-place team in their section. They are scheduled to face Ligonier Valley today. So, I don't... I think it was at five, so it's probably close to the end of our... I don't... I didn't hear any score updates. Both the boys and girls track teams finished regular season with identical six and three records, earning third place in their respective sections. Several athletes qualified for the Whipple individual championships held yesterday. Notably, Aiden Cunningham earned two fourth-place finishes, advancing to the PIA double-a championships. Taylor Schumacher also medaled, placing eighth in the javelin. Additionally, the boys and girls four-by-eight-hundred relay team finished seventh and eighth, respectively. The boys tennis team finished with a four-and-four record, with the largest roster in fourteen years. Uh, and then lastly, Whipple individual qualifiers include Aiden Cunningham, Eli Houdel, Mason Nemeth, Brady Hagerman, Ben Pyatt, Moshi Dell, Alexei Ewig, Gabby Bloom, Trinity Formanik, Haley Kaye, Ashlyn Moore, Taylor Schumacher, Danica White, Madison Lucas, Hannah McDonald, Elena Fink, Cora Thomas, Ava Olem, and Eden Te Garden. Thank you.
Four years ago, we began this work, um, drafting and updating the principal meetings here in the district. Um, we have, which is your principal cycle. We have disappointed us mathematics, English, arts, science, great physics, and twelfth. Tonight, we have two presenters. Back to that. Uh, here to present first, I see first, our associate principal, named after him, is our middle school associate teacher. Seven and an eight?
I have one eight, eight class, yep.
And then afterwards, we have, where our station five side, we have Paul Hines, who is a great teacher at Joe Walker, and Ashley Ward, who is a important teacher at Claysville. So, on deck. Can we... So, I see a couple people flip them. We switch the order because Ms. Becker has... It has to be out of curiosity by the way, did you off there?
Yep.
You're gonna get it. No one take it personally when she runs out of the floor.
Yep, yep. I had a pinch hit for this tonight.
No point.
Okay, um, this is our, um, high school middle school team. We have Kristen Anderson, High School. Um, Man Becker, Middle School. Mike Serra's in High School. He's our department chair. Kristen Littman teaches middle school and, um, freshman social studies also. Randy Patterson, sixth grade, in Connor Ridge High School. Um, our kinda mission with this was to, um, look at our course progression and improve it where we solve some needs, um, update the resources that we have to support the students, to make, um, history engaging, and to keep up with the, um, contemporary social studies content. Um, this is just showing where we're gonna make some changes. Um, kind of where we felt we needed to make a need was in middle school. Um, eighth grade was world geography and P.A. history, where the students were not getting U.S. history until they hit high school, and they have an option for an AP class in high school. So, we thought would be more important to hit American history in middle school. So, we made some, um, adjustments here. Sixth grade is gonna be ancient civilizations and world geography. So, they'll, um, tie in the geography skills with those ancient civilizations. Seventh grade, uh, world history, starting from the fall of Rome to current day. And then eighth grade, this is where we're making the change to U.S. history, but we're gonna keep a P.A., um, emphasis on this. So, as we are teaching these events of American history, throwing in the impact that Pennsylvania had throughout U.S. history. So, we're still gonna hit those P.A. government or P.A. history, um, objectives, but we're gonna do it from the American history point of view. And then, um, within law and civics, they're adding public policy, and with that, for the freshman course. Okay? Uh, we had several in-person, in-person meetings that we met together. Um, we went through different materials. Um, we looked at some online platforms and, um, of other resources that we could use within our classrooms. Um, for grades six through seven, we, uh, threw everything that we looked at, and we looked at this with a critical eye, looking at, you know, what's gonna give us, um, a good resource for the students, and cover the information that we wanna make sure we cover. Um, we felt that the Solis, My Interest Ward, World Interactive, was the best fit, and that would be a book that would be split between sixth and seventh grade. Um, American history, sticking with the Solis program, too. And then a program that we use is some online, um, subscription is GeoGuessers. This is a, uh, game that you can, through the online subscription, you can pick places, and it will drop the students in like they are in a Google Earth image. And then they can manipulate and make guesses on where they are. They will pinpoint where they are on the map, and they get a score, how close they are to the actual location. Um, it's a quick little activity that I know my eighth graders really love to do. They got really competitive with it, and, um, with this subscription, it should give us more, um, ways that we can use it within the classroom. Okay, um, and then from the high school. High school, grade nine, McGraw-Hill, Government and Civics. Grade ten, sticking with McGraw-Hill, for World History. Grade eleven, McGraw-Hill, U.S. History. Grade, grade twelve will be the Solis Economic and Principles in Action and Actively Learn Access for grades nine through twelve. American history with the, um, AP would be the American history connecting with the past, sixteenth edition, and that would cover the AP content. Um, for the psychology, AP Psychology would be Meyer Psychology. Holt Psychology and Sociology, Hope McDonald Sociology, the study of human relationships. And those, we're keeping those. Those aren't new. Yes, those are the ones we're keeping. Yeah.
Existing resources that the team called did not need to reach. Yup.
And, uh, something else that we're asking for is an EdPuzzle subscription. This is an online program where we can take a YouTube video, and it allows us to edit that video down. So, we can, um, kinda cut out portions that we don't think are necessary. Um, we can, again, skip over those, and then we can embed questions for the students to answer. They can do this on their own. Um, so they sit there, they watch the video. It will stop. We can generate the questions, what type of questions we wanna give. They are able to rewind that video, look for the answer, and then it self-scores. Um, it tells us how long the students were on the program, um, shows us what their answers were. We can even do open-ended questions. The kids can type that in, and then we can go back and grade those ourselves. So, it's a great tool. Um, we've been using the free subscription, but it locks you in at ten videos. And, you know, like, if you're doing, sometimes you just want a fifteen-minute video, maybe you want a five-minute video. With this, we, we have more access, and it's something that can be used district-wide. Um, I know it's used in science and ELA and law of other content areas use that, um, program. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, um, and thank you, you guys. We have, um, this time, and, uh, you just want to come up here and do your bit. I mean, all of you.
Back to the beginning, let's do the science.
Dr. Doctorin is responsible for overseeing and leading these efforts. So, again, he's, he's there, but I just wanna make sure that everyone recognizes that he is the driving force behind our curriculum there, so. Okay, ladies.
He really is the driving force. He, he keeps us all organized, and we really appreciate it. This is our, uh, team members for the Science Committee. Um, we've spent this entire year working very hard, um, taking classes, um, and going to other districts and going to conferences, because science is totally different than it has been in the past with the new steel standards. Um, we have Lindsay Conley from Claysville, third grade. Jamie Daly from Claysville, fifth grade. Myself from Joe Walker, fifth grade. Melissa Kearney from Claysville, second grade. Um, McKenna Marino, elementary computers, and I'll explain that one in a second. Um, Rebecca Sanders from Joe Walker Kindergarten. Kaitlin Schmidt from Joe Walker, first grade. And Ashley Ward from Claysville, fourth grade. Um, we are updating all of our elementary resources for STEELs. Uh, STEELs is a totally different approach for teaching science. It's inquiry-based, and it is phenomenon-based, and it's totally different from what we've done. Uh, it was, it's going to be, you know, it's very, been very hard this year with the implementation. This is implementation here. Um, with books from two thousand and eleven, they don't really meet our needs. So, we were very focused this year on this committee to find books that really fit the P.A. standards. So, um, we wanna make sure that they're engaging in phenomenon and, uh, inquiry-based exploration. And it's, it's a very unique and, if I have to say, cool way of, of teaching and learning science. And we just brought McKenna onto our team, our computer science teacher from the elementary. Um, there are a ton of technology parts to the STEEL standards, and it's probably going to be impossible for us in our science classrooms to do that. So, she, um, is also STEM certified, so she's going to be pulling some of the science, technology standards and teaching them through her computer classes, too. So, we're going to all work together to do it. All right, so just like social studies, the elementary science team held several in-person meetings, as well as email communications. Uh, we reviewed six different samples, or different resource options. We narrowed it down to three from there. Uh, at that point, we also, because it's elementary science, and that's something that everyone teaches, uh, we allowed for other teachers to view those resources, the top three that we had picked out, give some feedback. Um, and from that, we landed on the one resource that, uh, we are suggesting or recommending, uh, which is Discovery Education. So, this resource has kind of two different, um, sections, we'll say. Uh, that is Discovery Education or Mystery Science for grades K through five. So, K through two is gonna be a, a major focus for that, and for three through five, um, that's kind of in supplement to the Discovery Education Science textbook, uh, that we will have in those upper-grade levels. Things that we really liked about Discovery was that it meets those steel standards that we are, you know, coming up, uh, in, in having to implement into our science classes here. And it provided an enriching experience beyond just the book. Some of the other resources that we looked at, uh, the book, you know, was a really great resource, but there wasn't much else besides the book. Uh, and that's not really something that these standards are looking for. They want that hands-on activity and that phenomenon-based, uh, experience for the kids. So, in addition to the book, this, uh, resource also has an interactive glossary for better understanding of science vocabulary, so they can see pictures, they can see videos, they can, uh, you know, read about it in different contexts than just in what's in the book. Uh, it also has a lot of vivid, beautiful pictures and videos for visual learners. It includes both real-world experiments and labs that can be done in the classroom, as well as simulations, uh, online simulations that they could do on their computers as well. Uh, it is phenomenon-driven, which is what the steel standards are looking for. It has five different sections for each lesson, an introduction that kind of gets the students hooked, uh, you know, gets them interested in the topic. A wonder that allows them to connect their experiences and their thoughts with the material. A learn that's gonna be kind of like guiding them through the concept. Uh, share, sharing what they learned with each other, with the teacher, uh, being able to communicate those ideas. And beyond, which would be extensions for the material. So, if it was something that they were really interested in, there are, you know, avenues that they can explore to go further with that. Uh, in addition, Mystery Science, which we are fixing for K through five, was a resource that many teachers were already using, um, as a supplementary resource, the video part of that, uh, in their classrooms anyway. So, we thought that that was a good, um, you know, indicator of the value of this for our classrooms. Anything else you want? Very nice. You did a good job, both of you. Thank you.
Dr. Doctorin.
Oh, the fun part.
Yeah, I, I get the fun part. I, I offered it to all three of them. I said, "Who wants to do the budget?" And they all looked nice. Just kidding. They, they would have, uh, happily done it if, if asked. Um, and I, before we get to that detail of it, um, I just wanna really recognize and, and give credit to the, both of those school teams that you saw listed, but, um, especially a, a shout-out tonight to, um, to Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Imes, and to Mrs. Becker. And, um, you know, in Mrs. Becker's case, when we, um, it was gonna be Mr. Sarah as the department chair, and he had something come up this evening that he, he was unavailable tonight. And I said, "Hey, is there someone that can, can step in in his place?" And she said, "I can do it. I have to be out of there by seven." And we said, "Oh, that shouldn't be any problem." So, she, she was a trooper, and she, you know, she hung on, and I said, "Hey, let's, let's get you first. Let's try to, you know, make it work," and it did. Um, but so, thank you for, for being willing to be here and, and share. I think that teacher voice is huge. Um, so, about the estimated cost. Um, and I, I'll start by saying, I'm, I'm so grateful that over the, as Dr. Oberg mentioned, over the, the four years now, since we started to really tackle, um, curriculum and, and resource alignment and making sure that our, our staff has, um, current and, and fresh physical materials, digital materials, that, um, just the support, um, that I've gotten from everybody, from board-wise, from Dr. Oberg, from, from Mrs. Harvard talk with the, the budget side of it, from the, the teachers. Um, it's really shown that we, as a district, value the, the curriculum and instruction. And I, I have gotten, just, just yesterday, I've gotten teacher feedback that, "Hey, this is, this is as good as we have felt. This is, you know, uh, something that's really benefiting." And I'm excited, because after we complete the process for six-twelve social studies, K-five science, the only core content area that will have been untouched to this point will be K-five social studies, which of course, next school year, we will be forming a team looking at that. And then that will free us up to do two things that I'm excited about. One is to start really looking at some of the different elective content areas, and, um, also, it will free us to really dig into how we're applying these resources. But enough of that. Um, I wanted to share the cost. Um, and so, there, yes, Mr. Leisure.
May I interrupt you a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
You explained how you're gonna proceed. Um, can you explain on what rotation will we get back to where we started from?
Yeah, so this is, um, the fourth year we've been doing this. And each subject that we've, um, brought forward has been the same six-year, uh, commitment.
Okay.
So, this current year is year three of mathematics, because the very first year was review year. So, mathematics has twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year, we would be making, either continuing with the math series or, um, moving to something else, depending on the, the desire of the team.
It would be up for review.
It would be up for review. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight would be the last year of the current adoption. And then ELA would be the year after that. So, that, that would be the, the timeline that everything's on right now, is math would be the first one to come back up, and that would be review in twenty-seven, twenty-eight for implementation, either of existing resource or, or new resource for twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, um, and the reason I ask that question is I, I think a lot of our audience and participants, and myself personally, wasn't exactly sure the year of rotation.
Yup.
I just think it, it's important that they know that we finally are on track to handle this and not let it fall behind. And I can just relate a story. Years ago, a neighbor come to me and said, they was here at McGuffey, and they didn't have a book. They had to share it with somebody, and I'm like... It was just amazing how far you have brought the program and that our teachers' involvement, that will continue on a rotation that will always make sure that we're on top. I think that is awesome.
Yeah, no, thank you so much.
Along those same lines, to be clear, so last year was technically science, but we delayed the elementary portion to this year, because they had so much going on.
Correct.
And we're doing the same thing with social studies, it seems. Like, this year would have been social studies, but we're delaying the elementary portion to next year. Will that continue in the rotation? Will they continue to be delayed like that?
Yeah, so that's, uh, that's a great question. So, when we first...
Can maybe explain why?
Yeah, so when we first set out, and we, we kinda consensus that math should go first, and we did K to twelve mathematics, and then we went to ELA, and then K to twelve ELA. And so, I'm like, these guys kinda shared, at the elementary level, they're all teaching every subject. Um, some of our fourth, like, fourth and fifth grade at Claysville specializes a little bit. Um, but we had elementary teachers that were kinda like, "If you hit us with three subjects in three years, it's gonna be crazy. Like, can we, can we slow down just a little bit?" Um, and so, but six-twelve, and the, on the flip side, they were like, "We're ready to go. Like, we, we don't need to wait up, because the science and social studies teachers follow what math and ELA got, and they're like, 'Let's go.'" So, we, we split it into K-five and six-twelve for the science and for the social studies. Um, and to Ms. Jackson's question, would that be how we continue, or would we try to realign those? Um, I'd wanna talk to all the teams and see. Um, I think we would probably keep it separated out, just because since everything is on that six-year commitment, it's almost going to be, you know, joked from each other and, and follow each other in consecutive years. I, I wouldn't say we could never take it back to K-twelve, but it, it seems... but it seems like it would be set up nicely to just have those sorted out, give elementary that breather year partway through the cycle and go from there. Because that was, that was definitely the rationale, was it was hearing the elementary voices that were like, we love what we're doing, but if you give us one more right now, it might push us, you know, push us to a place where we can't swim in a circle. Well, let's, you know, let's hear that. And also hear the secondary people that were, were ready to go. So yeah, good question.
Thank you.
And so, I know that the numbers are right there, but just a couple of things I wanted to kind of point out for clarification. The EdPuzzle subscription is for K to twelve. The social studies teachers, I joke that everyone else is kind of red in their coattails on this one, because when they started asking about it and we looked into the cost, the cost of a full district subscription was minimally different than the cost to get it just for middle school and high school. So we said, let's, let's go ahead and do it. We knew that elementary teachers also were utilizing it. So it's, it's within their social studies adoption, but the six years of access will go to everyone across the district that would be able to utilize it. And then the only detail where it says recurring costs, just to explain what that is a little bit. The GeoPuzzler, and you can see, it's a very small cost. It's like forty dollars per teacher and there's three teachers in the middle school. We had elected, hey, since that's an annual subscription, let's just make it a annual line item in the middle school building budget, one hundred twenty dollars per year, so that they will always have that annual subscription. And then that, where you see the five to ten thousand for consumables, because there's more lab and inquiry and hands-on, one of the things we wanted to do was to try to be as fiscally responsible as we could, both this year and moving forward, but also make sure we weren't shorting resources. And so the first budget that I gave to Mrs. Harbor Talk was four hundred thousand for the two content areas. And then we, when I showed the first discovery quote to the teachers, and I want to give the teachers credit for this, they said, this is what we like the most, but we know that this price point is, is too high. And so then they charged me to go back with, to the rep and figure out ways to reduce it a little bit. And so instead of, and they, like, the lab kits, the consumable materials, as opposed to getting six years of always getting a refill every year, we said, let's do an inventory every spring, figure out which ones we've depleted, which ones we need to refill. And so that, the one thirty-three, five thirty-nine that you see there, that will get us the six years of the digital access for science. It will get us the first three years of the consumable, like, the workbooks. And it will get us the first wave of the science material kits. I mean, if you saw the inventory list, it's everything from like aluminum foil to cotton balls. It was like, it was like a very interesting list of miscellaneous supplies. And so what we said is that each year after year one, the grade levels will be tasked with working with grade level chair, working with myself, working with the principals, and determining what needs replaced for the science, the consumable equipment. And so we, I just, I like to be as forward as I can that there will be a, likely a small dollar amount each year that will just refresh consumable materials. So the one thirty-three, five thirty-nine is obviously the big bulk of that science resource, but then there will be a small cost of maintaining and refreshing lab materials, consumable books, things of that nature. So that's, that's kind of the cost breakdown. And that is within our budgeted amount. I know, you know, budgeted amount is key, and especially where we're at right now, but that is, that is within the number that we, we had talked about for the current budget that you all have looked at. And Mr. Wilson, if you want to go ahead and forward, and I saw, Mr. Leisure, do you have a question there?
Could you go back to that last one? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if I heard you correctly or not. So we're talking at two hundred and sixty-eight, seven ninety-nine. And you said something about four hundred thousand?
So the first budget number that I gave to Mrs. Harbor Talk way back when she was doing preliminary budget.
Did she beat you up very bad? I guess my question more or less is, I'm just asking, Mrs. Harbor Talk, in those communications with that company to come up with that number? I'm sure she probably was, but I'm asking that.
Yeah, so I, I did most of the direct talk with the reps from Sabbath and from Discovery Ed. But I, her and I would, would talk periodically about, hey, this is, this is my new max-out number. And what, basically the way I do that process is when I get their very first quote, usually around Thanksgiving or Christmas, I consider that the top-out number, right? You've given me a quote. If you try to go anywhere above that, I have the initial quote to say, hey, wait a minute. So then I, I give those numbers to her first as a placeholder. And then I go back to them and I, you know, I look for things like, should we really be paying twenty-eight percent shipping? Just as an example. Or do we really need, you know, this much for this item? And then basically work, and we've done the same with each of the different adoptions. Basically try to whittle it down to a reasonable number, but that, a number that doesn't sacrifice on the actual product or the actual implementation. And so that's how we got from four hundred down to two eighty-six was both subjects, both the social studies and the science, we were able to take those initial quotes and kind of work with the reps and, you know, talk to them and be like, hey, like, we're very interested. We're on a tight budget. We're, you know, we've, we've got kids here that we know deserve a quality product. And, you know, thankfully, the reps are agreeable to a certain point. You know, if I go back and I say, can we have it for free? Probably, probably they'll say, we love you, but not that much. But so that, yeah, so this, this reflects the, the number as of the most current quotes that I have from, from each company. Yep.
I guess what I would also like to say is we just recently had a budget meeting of finances and stuff. And the model that you just presented is exactly what we need to do as a board. I mean, the way you went through it and looked at what you need, what you don't need and all that. I mean, that, that is a role model that we could benchmark from, I think, of how he did, what he did to save money. And just share that with everybody, that is awesome.
Which he's done every year since we started this, so.
Thank you. No, I just, listen, it's, it's an important trajectory. Like, I know that, I know that the district values having the, the resources. And it's important to me that I, I take that responsibility and I, I honor it. So.
I have a question. And I'll just drop this for you and for Mrs. Harbor Talk.
Yeah, yeah.
But last year's budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four, right?
It was like, it was like four was last year.
Yes, right. Where we had budgeted an amount for science curriculum. And then the decision was made to postpone the elementary portion. So what they didn't use was that move forward to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Well, what happens is if money isn't used, it just stays in the general fund. And then when you create your budget next year, you have the resources available for your.
Right, so this, this amount came from, that was in the budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, which is what this falls in, is there because of the unused portion?
Oh, yes.
Right.
Yeah, any unused portion just falls back into what you have available for your bills for the next year.
And I just thought it was worth mentioning that last year, when we were looking at the science at that time, it was seven, or six through, six through twelve.
Six through twelve, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't use all of the budgeted amount for that. And that they were wise in, in, you know, making sure that, that there was enough to cover this year's portion of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you got your, oh, last thing. Yeah, so last thing, and this is on the back of your packet. And for anyone, if you don't have a packet and you can't figure out how to get to the link, anyone can always just shoot me an email. I can send you the direct link. But just like we've done with the other ones, if you want to look at the online demo access to the full resources, both for social studies and science, those links will take you to the, to a page that spells out how to log in, how to access those resources. And yeah, that's all we've got. Appreciate your time and everyone have a great evening.
I will just once again say thank you for the transparency. And I've been saying this every year since we started this process. And you've done a great job at making sure that the parents have the availability to preview and have input, and I thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Imes, and also to Ms. Ward here. And also again, thank you to Ms. Becker, who presented first.
Thank you all.
And before we get to, before we get to Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, is he still Becker? The, for anybody who wants to know, the girl softball team won five to one. So they're on to Monday in the next round of the WPL playoffs.
All right, so next up we have Mr. Mike Wilson. Mike is our Director of Technology and Transportation, both equally important. But tonight he is here to talk to us about Web Filtering. It's a tool that we use internally in our school. Keeps a lot of those mysterious websites out of the hands and eyes of our students. So Mike is here to talk about some options we looked at and what he's presenting for you to vote on tonight. So, Mr. Wilson.
All right, thank you for the floor tonight. Fair warning, I'm not as polished as all the other presenters that were up here tonight. So there must be a little bit here. Pardon me? We'll leave that one alone. So currently, just a kind of a brief overview, I'm not going to read. I did give you guys a handout. It's two-sided. It's pretty brief and pretty straight to the point. One, one mention though, on the, the comparison, Classroom Management, I made an error. The Deladio column, they do have a Classroom Management product there. And I, I put no on the sheet. It's actually yes. And we can go through that a little more as we go. But so a brief overview of our need here. Our web filter is pretty important. It filters all the bad stuff from the good stuff and internet-wise. So in the grand scheme of things, currently we use our, we have a Barracuda appliance that sits in our server. It's a, it's a physical appliance that's in the server room. We're looking to move away from server-based technology at this point for a couple of reasons. We had, we started to have some issues with our Barracuda at the end of last year. We thought it was a hardware issue. We ended up getting a new appliance, getting it installed. Still wasn't working quite right. We replaced our firewall, thinking that might have been the issue. We still had some issues after that. It did run smooth for about six to seven months. We, we didn't at the end of last year push to replace that unit. We thought that we had all the kinks worked out and everything was working good. Since then, we've had three incidents throughout the year where our web filter has failed. And it's kind of a, kind of a good thing, kind of a bad thing. When it fails, it just blocks everything, which is kind of good and kind of bad. In an educational setting where a lot of our learning takes place over the internet, if you can't access those resources, then that's a bad thing. But at the same time, if it's blocking everything, they can't get to something that could potentially be bad, we'll say. So we're at the point now where we want to move forward with a cloud-based solution where we're not having to maintain the appliance. We're not, we're not going to have to maintain or manage or upgrade those, those physical devices anymore. It's a subscription-based system that we're looking to go to. We did look at four different vendors, five, if you can include the Barracuda. Barracuda does have a web interface or a cloud-based system. The problem that that is, is it doesn't have a lot of the more functionality that the filters have with it. So we're going to move away from Barracuda at this point. Um, Securely, both are actually optimal in comparing on the first side. Really what it comes down, BART for schools, or device-specific, I mean, it's like, it's a great solution for families, if you have screen time and filtering on your own specific devices. It lacks a little bit of the, I believe we need as a school to block networks and stuff like that. And Deladio is, is similar in that aspect. It doesn't have, it may have some sneakiness, but the demos that we, we've sat through were not real specific on how that worked. And it was a little unclear point as to whether or not it could actually do what we were asking it to do. So we kind of narrowed it down to Securely and HAPR, which are very, very similar. And, and everything that you look at these days, AI is involved. I mean, and it just is. And so you'll see, you can, I'm really comparing Securely and HAPR. And when it comes down to kind of the robust network management that Securely had the functionality for reporting, plus they had a couple add-on components that could potentially be useful for us as well. We're really looking at the, the overall filtering of the network, number one, and also classroom management piece that will help our teachers maintain some, some muttering of the screens and stuff like that during class time. It also provides a little bit more functionality when, it doesn't, it does where a resource is identified by a teacher and they go, they follow that link and it's blocked. In instances like that, we can have photo rides where that teacher, they know it's a source, they can push that, that source to the students on those screens. So they can, they kind of control it a little better that way. So while it's not necessarily a deal breaker, a huge deal a lot, it, we do run into that occasionally. So that, that type of functionality is really what we're looking to kind of go for. Kind of to sum it up a little bit, I provided you some price comparisons on the pack. We are recommending to go to Securely. That's what's on the board agenda. And there's a, there's a couple other components that come with Securely that kind of put, you know, set it apart from the others that we looked at. Number one, it was, it was the most cost-effective that we looked at. But it also comes with some components that we could potentially push out to parents. So when those devices go home, parents can have a little bit more control about how much screen time their students are having on school-owned devices. And that's kind of, I don't know a whole lot about that now, but I know it's going to be an option. So that's, that's potentially something. And, and if we do roll something like that out, obviously, we're going to communicate that as effectively as possible. Some of the other things, there's a component called Reveal that comes with the, with the system. And that's really analytics about different apps and websites that students are using throughout the day and on the devices that they're using. So we can look at, if we're purchasing, if we're paying for a specific app, how well is that actually being used? Or how often is it being used? Or what, in what environment? And how effectively are we getting our, our money for it, right? That's kind of what that's focused on. The other component that comes free with it is what they call IA Chat. And it's essentially, the easiest way to describe it would be ChatGPT for education. So it's, it's not ChatGPT out in the real world. It's all filtered and kind of focused toward educational use. So those are some extra components that, that come with the Securely that could potentially benefit us. You can see the cost analysis there and our recommendations. So if you have any questions.
And maybe just to explain for everybody, on the, on the front under, over Classroom Management, Securely says, yes, Securely Classroom. And HAPR says, yes, Poor Classroom. If you could maybe explain.
Yeah, really just, just proprietary naming. I mean, same basic functionality. You have the ability to see what students, what links they're hitting. You can, you can mirror their screen if you wanted to from the teacher's perspective. And if they're somewhere they're not supposed to, you can close that tab out and refocus them on where they're supposed to be, that, that kind of functionality. But that's, that's just a.
Terminal. That's why I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. And then I love the detailed reporting aspect of that. Does it report, does it generate reports specifically for student devices, only student devices? Or will it generate reports for all devices in the building, including future devices?
So it gets, it gets pretty granular with that. And really, it can come down to, it can come down to device-specific. It also can come down to account-specific. If it's not a district-owned device and it's on our guest network, it'll go to the MAC address or IP address. And it'll, it'll let you go that granular with it if you wanted to, I think.
I was just thinking, come on, if they're like, you know, if we're, is the district paying for an online subscription that teachers.
Sure.
Are using, are they really using it? Or do we need to relook at that?
Right, yeah, it's all, it's all web, web traffic. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is the digital hall pass solution, is that like an add-on?
It is. We didn't look at that specifically, to be honest with you. We, we have a kind of a solution in place now.
Yeah, that is truly a game changer. I'm going to turn it on to it. Do you have some of it?
Yeah.
Cut down hallway traffic.
Yeah.
We, before we even knew that was available, we started with, Dr. Welk in the middle school, we actually used Google as our hall pass. So we, but, right, yeah. It has, it has, because now we're able to track students, have to sign up electronically and then sign back in electronically, so very similar.
The nice thing about a solution like this is if it has something that we identify as a potential need, then it's, it's, once the initial setup's done and implementation's done, in order to add a component like that is.
Minimal.
Minimal, so. Minimal, so, yeah, that's definitely something, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Um, with the screen time, you mentioned it, it can even be used at home. Is that controlled by the school district, or is that a feature that the parents actually tap into and?
So, so initially it, it will be controlled by the school district.
Okay.
Um, one of the components is, it's called home, is what it's called. Um, is basically like a parent portal, like access to securely. Um, and they wouldn't necessarily be able to control anything that's going on during the school day.
Right.
But you would be able to set parameters from my understanding of, you know, if you, if you wanted parents to have access to that portal, um, and allow them to block screen time per se on the school device during certain hours, that's something that they would be able to control. Um, it's still gonna be able to be controlled by the district initially, but, and as, as we get more familiar with that, we'll have a better idea for sure.
Right, right. The, the parent portal, um, you mentioned they wouldn't have access during the day while the kids are at school. Is that because of a choice, or that's just not available?
And so I guess from my perspective, I'm thinking if, if they're sitting in that classroom and they're supposed to be on a certain site, then the ability for the parent to come in during the day and turn that site off would not be available, I guess is what I was thinking.
Okay.
Um, that's not to say that they're, I mean, potentially, um, you could get into a situation where you could restrict certain times for, for certain kids or accounts or, you know, stuff like that. Um, but I think if it's during the school day, it's probably gonna have to go through, um, an administrative process.
Okay. With, with regard to that, and I ask because, um, I, I think something like this can eliminate hearsay, um, for lack of a better term. You know, teacher says, student's not doing this, mom and dad say, yes, they are, and then we have this. Is it, um, when it's monitoring, is it, is it something that can go back and be viewed at another time? Is there any kind of feature like that?
I don't, I mean, like a historical, um.
Yeah.
Potentially, I don't, I don't have that answer necessarily.
Where they are.
I know that, I know that in, when, if they have, if, if a teacher has, uh, the need for it, they can like take a snapshot of what's on that.
Okay.
Um, but as far as going back in time to a, a certain point in time, I don't know that that's necessarily something that's built in. Yeah, yeah.
But it could generate a report as to, like, which students were on which site at what time.
Yeah, it'll go back in history.
But it's blocking the screen, so I didn't know if there was some kind of, I don't know, rewind.
Right, yeah. To my knowledge, I, I would say probably not. Um, but that's not to say that it's not possible. I can, I can find out for sure.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Wilson, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay, um, speaking of brief, next, uh, we, we have a brief budget presentation, um, Mrs. Harbichak.
Yes, since we did a pretty extensive presentation on Tuesday, I'm gonna keep this pretty brief. What you have in front of you as board members is tonight's brief presentation. You also have the proposed version of the budget. This proposed version is what we, um, enter the data into the state system, and the state system actually prints out this nice report for you. Every expenditure and revenue that you see in my presentation is also in here, broken down into more specifics details. So just to start, um, I'm just gonna give you a rec- recap real quickly of twenty-four, twenty-five. On the revenue side, we had budgeted thirty-four point nine million. As of April thirtieth, we were at thirty-one point three million revenue received, so almost ninety percent. I will say that we are scheduled to get another two million from the state for our basic education funding. That will take us up to ninety-five percent of our revenue, so I'm feeling pretty good. On the expenditure side, we budgeted just under thirty-six million. As of April thirtieth, we have spent twenty-seven point six million, so roughly seventy-seven percent of the budget. So I'm very optimistic on the expenditure side. However, you have to remember that we do pay teachers June, July, August, and those are coming out of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So on to twenty-five, twenty-six. This twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures includes the addition of a fifth-grade teacher, Esther Walker. The reports, everything stayed the same except for the one hundred salaries category and the two hundred benefits category. So now you're at thirty-seven million, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six. Which is about ninety-six thousand more than what I had originally had in there. For twenty-five, twenty-six, the, this is all the same as what we saw Tuesday during the budget presentation. The budget options, the expenditures, as you know, increased a little bit. So the deficit amounts for each of those millage rates also increased by that ninety-six thousand. Again, our general fund reserve is listed there, this did not change since our last presentation. What I will, um, have you take notice of is on the very last page of the proposed version from the state report, once I enter all of our revenue and expenditure data, it sits out what our reserve and unreserved funds will be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So if you notice, we have our non-spendable of three hundred and seventy thousand listed, our assigned fund balance of two point six, and then our unassigned fund balance is gonna go down to five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's what we would have as a savings going into twenty-six, twenty-seven. So I just want everybody to be aware that we're gonna be down pretty low. And therefore, we're gonna start talks in July about what we need to do to plan for future years so that we're not constantly trying to figure out how to get by year by year. And that's really all I have to present tonight.
Mrs. Harbichak, there was a very interesting article on channel, um, I'm not exactly sure, on a local TV channel today about, I believe it was Penn Hills. And at the, I only caught the end of the interview, but the lady was saying that the fiber charter school is what's killing them also, and that they improved, put in a pool, um, robotics and something in the ed- in the, uh, elementary to try and pull them students back. I know we're never gonna afford pools, but we already have robotics and a lot of things, so.
Right.
I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to be creative.
Mrs. Harbichak, and so just to be clear, once again, so if we do not do any tax increase, we do not have enough in the unassigned to cover the deficit.
Correct.
And if we raise, um, half a mil, we have enough there, but barely.
Correct.
If it's two, two point one, then we would need a little more than one point eight. And if we raise to the index, which is one percent, correct? It's, it's a little better, it was one point six out of our two point one.
Correct.
Um, and the administration's recommendation is?
Is to go up to the full millage rate, which would be fourteen point six two compared to what it currently is at thirteen point nine three.
Thank you. And thank you once again, you always do an outstanding job, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harbichak. Okay, last, uh, this evening, uh, item number six. Uh, we meet now monthly, uh, to discuss policy updates and new policies. And to present where we are with that is our Policy Committee Chair, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you. Um, this was presented for first read last month. This is policy eight twenty-seven, of the conflict of interest. Um, and it would be up for a vote tonight. Um, everybody's had a chance to review it over the last month. There really were not a lot of changes, uh, to this. Um, it's pretty straightforward. What we did change was adding a heading, um, you'll see that on the last page, on page four, um, reporting conflicts of interest. Uh, we added that heading, um, for that section. And the paragraph, for the superintendent or designee, shot report in writing to the federal awarding agency or pass-through entity, any potential conflict of interest related to a federal award in accordance with federal awarding agency policy, cleaned up that language. Other than that, it was mostly like putting in commas where they needed to be, fixing spacing in between items. There really wasn't a lot of change there. And that's pretty it, that's, that's it. Um, as far as that policy, the board, uh, the policy committee met on Tuesday, and we started reviewing policy eight fifteen, which is on, um, technology usage. Yeah, and then from there, we're gonna go to eight fifteen point one, which is more about AI usage. Um, and that will be a new one. Um, eight fifteen we've had, so we're reviewing what we've had and how we need to update it specifically in relation to, um, how it may be affected by eight fifteen point one. Um, and then we'll move to eighteen, uh, eight fifteen point one. So the idea is, we did this time, we asked, over the last month, we asked the administration, um, Dr. Oberg, uh, to get with his, with his staff, and we also asked Mrs. Harbichak for any policies that they felt needed to be addressed soon. Uh, we also asked board members to submit any requests they had. We had one board member who submitted a request. A lot of the requests, actually all of Mrs. Harbichak's requests were also on Dr. Oberg's list. So the ones where they were both asking for them, we moved them kind of to the top. Then we put in the one that was requested by the one board member, and then we put the rest of Dr. Oberg's after that. What we've done is we've created kind of a, a rolling agenda, so we've listed those in order at the bottom. And as we get done with one, the, the next one will just roll up. And the idea is that we'll always keep that bottom, can't remember if it's five or six, that are on there at the bottom. Somebody has to remember. I don't remember, but anyway, um, at the bottom, so that as one moves up, we add another one to the very bottom so that we continue rolling forward on reviewing policies. But, oh, thank you, I was way off. So nine, um, and then, you know, with that, so that, what that means is, if at any time, uh, a board member does have something they wanna request that we look at, or, you know, the Dr. Oberg or Mrs. Harbichak or anybody comes to us and says, well, you know what, now we need this one, um, that it keeps on a rolling basis. The only change to that would be, uh, policies that are time-sensitive. So if we know that there's one that has to be done by a certain date, um, or we're, um, this happens sometimes where you're, you're applying for a grant, and in order to apply for that grant, you need to have reviewed this particular policy within the last year. Um, and so that might be something on the agenda, uh, for time-sensitive reasons. But other than that, I think we're, we're moving forward. Any questions? Thank you.
I'll just add that, uh, eight fifteen point one, uh, is gonna be one of the major topics of our discussion when we have our admin retreat, the June tenth to the twelfth. We've actually planned it, I believe, for the last day, Mike? Seems about right, yeah. So we'll, we're gonna dive a little bit deeper into it before our next.
And that is all kind of correlating together because, of course, next year, we already know there is kind of a, a push in the district to include some AI usage, so get some training for teachers as well as students, and then looking at how they're utilizing it. So we're gonna make sure that we have all of the safeguards in place prior to.
Ms. President, that is all I have for committee.
Thank you, Dr. Oberg, and thank you to everybody that presented, and thank you to the Policy Committee, um, for working on the policies. That will close the committee meeting at seven forty-five PM. We will reconvene in five minutes at seven fifty PM for the board.
It is now seven fifty-three PM. I call to order the McGuffey School Board of Directors' school board meeting. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Seven.
Here.
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 Present.
Here. Uh, Pastor Bruce, if you'd come forward. Uh, our prayer this evening is going to be had by Pastor Bruce from the West Alexander Christian Church.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For small wanted to say thank you for your invitation for the invitation. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here this evening, and we ask your blessing upon this assembly of the McGuffey School Board and all those that of great interest that work together here in this very room. Father, I just pray that you would please bless every one of us with your wisdom and guidance. And Father, I pray that we would, in the matter of making decisions, that we would listen closely, that we would be just, and that we would also consider very much the differing opinions, and Father, to, to come about with resolve led by your spirit to keep us together and to keep us growing strongly. Father, I just pray also that we would understand that as being stewards of the students, the family, the teachers, of the community, all that work together then, I pray that you would find us worthy in stating that being stewards of all these matters, above all these precious ones, and all on your side, that we would, that we would look forward to hearing you say to us face to face, I pray that we would hear those words, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." On all these things, we do ask in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you.
May we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to make an announcement that we had an executive session that was held at five PM today to discuss personnel and litigation. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items.
This president, we tell first Tiffany Walker, South Franklin Township.
Thank you, Chief.
So we know how cyber is a big, 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 big problem in our budget, correct? That's one of our, we need to cut it. We need to cut it bad. But have we reached out to any parents and asked why we can't bring the kids back into the school? Why had one parent reach out to me? And they want me to read this, and this is why their kid's in cyber. I'm going to read exactly what's on this paper. So pay attention. Let me introduce myself. My name is Wendy Ringer from South Franklin Township. I give Tiffany Walker permission to speak on my behalf due to graduation. My first and main concern is bullying. South McGuffey District had no bullying, bullying policy. What happened to No Child Left Behind? I pulled my seventh grader from school. Why? Because not only does my child get bullied from other children, some of the staff is way worse. Told straight to my face, my daughter was a troublemaker, nothing but trouble. She's drama. What principal would say something like that? Not only did he say it to me, but my daughter as well. Let me fill you in during school hours. My daughter was put on anxiety medicine for school. Only I got calls and texts stating my daughter was having chest pains. Every day that now that she is in cyber, the only time she needs this medication is when she goes to school, because she's scared of something being said to her. Not to mention how many students at the time of Goffy either are cutting on themselves or actually committing suicide. Shouldn't we be looking into this? My daughter's in the life skills class. And let me tell you, the instructors of the class are amazing, and they all need to be recognized. But Wolk and Waldo, there's a whole different story on them. I believe my child should get the same education as the rest of my, of the children in the district, and then raise school taxes for what? Everybody is going to cyber. Shouldn't us parents get paid? Why should we have to pay more taxes? My hours at work have been reduced since I have to be a parent and a teacher. Not fair to any of us. So basically, we pay taxes for our children to be treated worse than dogs and be bullied. Get it together, McGuffey. My next request will be from McGuffey to pay for my child's education in a different district and provide transportation to and from. Not to mention, my daughter was being bullied by a high schooler. Then she doesn't, now she doesn't even want to even attend school. Any one of you can look at her attendance, but this district is first to have you at the magistrate paying fine for our children being bullied. Not fair again. So until we can get this issue resolved, my daughter will finish this year out of cyber. Next year, twenty-five to twenty-six, she will be back in school setting out of McGuffey District, and I appreciate it as McGuffey would be responsible for this charge and transportation to and from another district of our choice. So you have parents that want to put their kids back into the school. Our school is not it. I saw, I told you before, I thought about taking my kids out and making you pay to take them somewhere else. It's just not it. This is why we have so much cyber, because we're not helping the bullying thing. Now, she may have her feelings on Wolk, but I do want to say this on Mr. Wolk. He has proved to me in the past months, he is trying to keep our kids out of the magistrate. He is trying to come up with other options to get these kids to come together, settle their differences, other things, and taking these kids out and sending them to magistrate. You're not teaching them anything. Once again, you're still not teaching them anything. We put them in cyber. The kids are good, but look what it's costing us. We're about to not have a school. We need to reach out to these cyber parents and ask them why. What can we do to bring them back? Let's bring them back. You would agree, Harbor Talk, that this is the biggest problem. Why are we not trying to find a solution for it? Which is reach out to those parents that are in our district. That's costing us this money, and I don't blame them. They want a teacher salary now. Now they want a teacher salary. Can we afford a teacher salary to parents? No, no, we can't. Can we afford to send these other kids to other districts because they don't want to be in our district? No, we short and narrow can't do that. So y'all need to really look into your cyber-ness. Get it gone. Bring these kids back. Show them they can be safe here. I mean, a lot of parents don't feel like it, but I mean, this is the biggest problem, and it's because of the bullying. And some of the staff up here are very rude. I've already caught some of them. So y'all need to really take a really good look in it. Reach out to the parents. That's why you sit on this board. Reach out to those parents. Bring these kids back. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Chief.
This president, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, uh, Jessica, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough. Um, I am going to break my streak of only positive comments, uh, and I'm, because I'm here to ask that you vote to raise school taxes. This is not a decision I have come to easily. Of course, nobody wants to pay more taxes, but I understand the need to do so. Without raising taxes, we could face, we, I'm not, sorry, not could, would, face significant staffing cuts. This after cutting twenty-two positions over the last seven years already. More staffing cuts could be a huge detriment to our students. Every time a staff member gets cut, their responsibilities are passed on to others, and our class sizes are increased. The fewer staff members we have, the fewer eyes we have to watch for issues such as bullying, fewer opportunities for more one-on-one help from teachers, and more chances of things slipping through the cracks. If you asked around, you would find that a majority of our staff already wear multiple hats. If I could share my own personal experience, uh, the year before I started as the Special Education Secretary, so this would be 2019, my position was two people. Um, when I started in August of 2020, um, my position was cut to one and a half, uh, special ed secretaries. Um, we had a Claysville, uh, main office secretary retire, and so one of the special ed secretaries was sent up to the main office. She was half special ed, half, uh, main office. If you've spent any time in the Claysville office, you know it's an extremely busy office. It is our busiest office in the district because we have six grades. Um, the young kids, they're the most needy. The parents are the most needy, so of course, it's your busiest office. So over that first year that I was here, I also absorbed that other half of the job. Um, about two, three years into, uh, my tenure here, um, we had a, um, lead support teacher retire. Um, her position was not replaced. She kind of served like an assistant to our supervisor of special ed. Um, her position was divvied up amongst our school psychologists, um, our supervisor of special ed, and myself. Um, so I share that with you, um, not to complain or gain sympathy. I absolutely love my job. My workload is completely manageable. I'm fairly busy, which I like. I like to be busy. Um, but just one example of what happens when there are cuts made. Um, uh, in addition to staffing cuts, there have also been overall budget cuts. For example, the high school budget has gone down a hundred and three thousand dollars over the last five years. Um, I understand this is not an easy decision. It's not something that is easy for me to ask either. Um, but I believe our first priority should be our students and doing all we can to make sure that they can achieve their best educational potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Thank you, Chief.
Give me one sec, Chief. Okay, I'm ready. Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I want to start off tonight, um, with the agenda item solicitor. Uh, I want to start off by the most current issues that I would like to point out, and then move backwards in time. So first of all, I'll just start with Tuesday's meeting. You in April had just approved policy oh oh six. And in that policy oh oh six, one of the things you voted on was public time to speak. There was a before time and an after time. It includes all meetings, not just regular meetings, special meetings, every meeting. So we get to Tuesday night's meeting, and I stand before you and I say, I don't want to speak in the beginning. I want you all to debate. I would like to speak after. And I was denied initially. And I was told if other people show up because the agenda time wasn't matching what was in the paper, then I could speak. The solicitor sat here and said, she advised the board president and Dr. Oberg when they were making the agenda for the special meeting, that we should only have one public time. I don't know why solicitor feels like they should be able to switch our policy and change something that you had just voted on. It's not, that's not her job to do. Then I'm going to go to prayer. During the whole prayer issue, when it got down to we were going to find, you guys were finally going to vote on it, which was her suggestion, several board members were very clear on how they wanted the agenda item worded for the next meeting. She agreed, said she had it under control. And then we got to the next meeting, and she failed to do so. She claimed she didn't recall it. And then I'm going to go back a little further and history. And that was an incident with Mr. Leisure. Now, everybody knows if you've been paying to these tensions, these meetings for the last five years, Mr. Leisure and I have not always agreed. So me standing before you, standing up for him should tell you a lot. At that committee meeting, she allowed him, she, he asked, can I discuss certain topics? Is this my time to talk? And she told him yes. And she let him go through his list of things. And then the very next meeting, she blindsided him when he attempted to do it again, and she told him no. I find her, she flip flops on her advice. It's conflicting information often. I know myself and many others have a lack of confidence in AMP at this point. And I really believe it's time for a change. It's time to unite the board, and I think the only way we can do that is by replacing the solicitor. There's too many interpersonal relationships between the solicitor, the administration, and board members. And I would go further back in time, but Mr. Capola is here tonight, and he will do that much more gracefully than I will. With a few minutes left, I wanted to bring up the fitness center. And I would like to ask these few questions because I want everybody else to understand, because it took me many meetings to get there. So we're all talking about the budget, and now we've got something on the agenda that's got this huge price tag attached to it. So my question is, fifty K from the capital project fund. Mrs. Harbor Talk, can you please explain what that fund is? How much will be left? How is it replenished? And what happens to any used funds, unused funds? That's my time ticking away.
One up for me to answer.
No, I understand that, but I, how is she hearing me if you, if,
I'm away from Ms. Jordan.
I get what you're saying. I totally get it.
So when we get to the budget, when we discuss it,
Okay.
she's writing down your questions,
Okay.
and she'll answer them.
Perfect. And then if we, if we deplete that amount, then what happens if something catastrophic happens with a boiler, a air conditioning unit, or whatever? Um, wow, I still have two minutes left. I'm talking fast and I, I am going to leave these other three items for non-agenda. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I appreciate that. We agree to disagree.
This president, last, Justice Capola,
Thank you, Chief.
South Franklin Township.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
C O P P O L.
Been a while.
It has been a while. Uh, you can start. So, I mean, obviously, you guys know, I'm the majority of you. Probably know. And I can see by the eye contact, you got, yeah. Thank you. So obviously, I'm here because of what Andrew and Price put us all through during COVID. I'm sure we don't ever want to go back to that. I'm sure at least now we're a lot more knowledgeable. I'm sure that we probably won't ever have those ineffective things happen again at McGuffey. That's wonderful. So I guess like the main thing that, uh, Vicki was, yeah, Vicki was saying was, you know, advice. Advice can be a very manipulative thing from a solicitor. Can we not agree with that? When somebody gives advice as a solicitor, what would be important would be, you know, well, what's required by law? And as you, I'm sure we can all agree, like, not anybody here, which I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that Andrew and Price isn't here. I don't know. Are they remotely, or are they just not here? Are they remotely, or are they just not here? You guys don't have to answer that, right? All right. Well, I don't know what to think about that. But anyways, like, legal advice. You guys shouldn't have to try to monitor someone that you've contracted out using our taxpayer money to police and try to be on top of. And just based off the inconsistencies, it seems pretty evident that, you know, a lot of manipulation has been, you know, thrown through the word advice. So I guess like the main thing that I'm just trying to get across is, you know, with Andrew and Price during that time, had a very difficult time to distinguish between a mandate and a law. I mean, that's pretty terrible. Like, I mean, a lawyer, like, clearly, like, a mandate isn't a law. So you guys aren't required to follow a mandate. You're only allowed to follow what is legally binding to make sure that you guys don't get in trouble. So I guess like one of the biggest things that my wife actually pointed out during that time was whenever the PA Department of Health was really pressing you guys to make sure that you were holding down to the masks, the social distancing, the remote learning, the vaccine clinics. And then you had your administration literally working for the PA Department of Health for free when they're already burdened as it is. So I honestly think that was all stemming from, quote, advice. But when my wife actually, uh, making sure I have a good time, actually challenged Andrew and Price and said, "What are we required by law to submit to the PA Department of Health?" Just pretty much if somebody had a case, and then you throw it to the PA Department of Health. But this solicitor wanted you guys to continually do all of this charade, which is so funny because if you think about it, I'm a business owner. You know, I'm a contractor too. I can go into somebody's house, open up drywall, and I can tell them whatever it is because they're going to trust me. I'm not the type of individual that's going to rob somebody blind based off their ignorance of what my profession is. So what I've noticed, the constant trend with Andrew and Price is it seems that it hasn't really changed. They just change it with advice. And it's kind of persuading when, in fact, I knew you guys know your sovereignty, but whenever it comes to things like advice, like, you need to start asking, okay, what's required by law? So regardless if you vote for Andrew and Price, I have a very strong feeling that you guys have already made up your mind about what direction you're going in. I hope that you get a new one, but even with the new one, I would hope that the staple would be what is required by law so that you guys, as the board, can all be, like, on the same page and to actually keep the solicitor, like, accountable. So I don't know if I asked, but like, the attachment, there's like terms and conditions based off the potential of getting Rebecca Weiss as like the new solicitor. So are you, like, since there wasn't an attachment, and I know for, like, personnel and certain things in executive meeting, is that public since it's contingent off a price that was agreed to, to have that public? Meaning like there's terms and conditions that are contingent on if you guys accept what that price would be? Like, what are those terms and conditions for the potential new solicitor? No, I, I, I'm going to guess that that's probably not going to be. So hopefully, you guys can kind of understand. I want to be gracious to you guys. And the most valuable thing that I learned through the multiple emails with Dr. Oberkirk, I mean, I, I will say certain names. I mean, you guys as a whole board, there's some that I haven't emailed, but I have talked to personally, and we all have a relationship. Please know that, like, I love and respect all of you. I know we don't obviously agree on this, but it's very, very obvious how Andrew and Price is bleeding the district of money, creating a problem, creating liabilities with their problem, and then you go to them for the solution. It's kind of like an abusive relationship because we haven't been, we, we've been here before. Like, the charade that came with, oh, we're going to get a new solicitor. And then the board unanimously voted to continue with Andrew and Price. So I would just hope that politics would stay out of this because the masks, the mandates, all of the things that was advice from the solicitor, the children were the ones that had the most amount of issues. And I remember at that time, the education with the remote learning was detrimental to those kiddos. And I'm sure that some of them are still trying to catch up. Again, we don't understand how certain things were happening, but as we're all here, like, the majority of us are here today, like, we noticed that these kiddos weren't really at that risk. And the solicitor was trying to do the bidding of the governor as well as the legal document of the attestation form, which, I want you so bad to say everything I want to say, but I believe in what I've already said is it would be very evident by your vote tonight, after everything of what I've said, everything, that some of you were on this side. And that's what frustrates me. I get it. It's hard. Like, politics, it can do a lot of things to you. I just hope that tonight, it's not a political issue, that it's literally for the best interest of the kids, that we can get rid of Andrew and Price and get a new solicitor. And hopefully, there would be a contingency of six months to the test drive to see how they would do. I think that's a safe bet to kind of go that route. So if that is something that is within the terms and conditions, that'd be phenomenal. So, I've got twenty seconds, and again, I love and respect you all. I just hope that what I had to say is important, enough to get rid of Andrew and Price because they're terrible. God bless you all.
Thank you.
This is President, that concludes the comment.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
So I need a motion to appoint Rebecca Hall of Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer to serve as solicitor from McGuffey School District under the terms and conditions of the board.
I'll second. I motion to table.
I'll second. Mrs. Jackson seconded the table. Yeah, we need to have a discussion on the motion.
To table?
To table.
I thought there was no discussion on tabling.
No, you can.
Once it passes, there's no discussion.
Yeah, once it passes.
Okay. Robert's rules.
I think it's since we, there was a motion made after, and that's why we read it the way we did so we can make a motion. So let's have a discussion on tabling it, and then we will vote on tabling it. If the motion fails, then we will vote on the, the board agenda. Anybody, you want to start?
I don't care.
Go right ahead.
I want to be clear that it's not, in any way, that we wouldn't revisit this. It's a tabling, it's not putting it aside completely. It's just that this was brought forward abruptly without knowledge of, a lot of the board didn't have, a lot of the board members didn't have knowledge of it. We have a new board member who's been sued for month and a half. There's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of things to get cleared up. I just think it would be nice to have an opportunity for the board as a whole, as a collective, which is the role we have. We don't have any authority as individuals. We are a collective unit. I think it would be nice for the board as a collective unit to have time to discuss this and go through the process that we've had in the, in the past, rather than to haphazardly go forward.
I would, I would just say that we had one board, one rogue board member consider that without talking to anyone else, and that's just a procedural error. We can't just go, we need time to look at what we're doing. It's not that we don't want to consider it or we don't want to look at it, but we, we do need the time to do it, to do it fairly.
We had the opportunity to do so in October. Everybody was willing to have the conversation, to send out the RFP, which is time and money for all of us, all the public, the solicitors that submitted RFPs. And then we sat down and we took our time, and we listened to five or six of them interview. And then at the end of the day, the majority of the board still, what was Andrews and Price. And for me, this, Mrs. Hall, I remember her, and she was my pick from the start. And I'm going to tell you right now, it's still not going to change.
I will say that, and I respect that, Mrs. Oberbarnik. I think you're stating my case for everyone that is on, from my point of view. That was back in October. I, like I said to all of you, I'm not opposed to visiting, appointing a new solicitor. I think we need to do it collectively and have time. I only asked to table it for a month. I don't care if it's two weeks. I'm saying, don't make a decision within forty-eight hours. We have a board member, Mr. Grove, who was not here in October. So you're asking him to make a vote on an important agenda item when he didn't hear the, all the sales pitches, or I guess is the best way to put it. So what I'm asking, or what I am suggesting, is that we table it and then put it on the agenda for next month.
My, my concern is that it's not going to get brought back up. With all due respect, Mr. Kern, because of something that I'm speaking. Thank you. I, I can't necessarily say what occurred in executive session and what I received, but I have concerns that because of what I received personally named, that this is the reason why we are where we are right now. And that we are trying to table and squelch the voices of some of the board members that have been fighting since they got in this seat to have a voice and have an opinion and try to collaborate and do what's best for this district and the kids.
I, I hear what you're saying, but you, you,
Can I ask a question?
Once, I'll come to you real quick. You admittedly said, "We voted," and the vote was five-four for Andrews and Price. Now that there's a new board member who just got on the seat, now you want to revisit the solicitor when he hasn't had time to work with Andrews and Price or look at everything? You dropped this on a forty-eight hours' notice.
But like,
That's all I'm asking. I don't think I'm asking for anything out of, out of the realm, just,
Procedurally,
revisit it in June.
Procedurally, when you table something, it is automatically brought up the next month unless you give a directive, the board as a whole gives a directive for it not to be.
That was my question. I did walk in Robert's rules of order, which we do follow. You are not supposed to be discussing a tabling. But regardless, I tabled something, it, it comes up the next month. It's one month. When you table it, it comes up next month. Is that correct?
Yes.
I kind of think, I kind of think that it's disrespectful to Mr. Grove to say that he's only had a month and a half. He's retired Air Force, if I'm not mistaken, retired military. He, you know, he's worked with airplane, airplane, airplane mechanic, excuse me. You know, he's a gentleman of our community. I think he has a mind and he has an opinion of his own. I think it's disrespectful to say that you've only had a month and a half and that we shouldn't allow you to vote, Mr. Grove.
No, what I'm saying is, I'm going to, Mr. Capola, please, no outbursts from the crowd, please. This is our time to debate. Everybody had a chance to come up to the podium and speak. This is our time. Let us do our business. What we're saying is, what I'm saying is, I can't speak for anybody else, is Mr. Grove did not have an opportunity to sit in on those interviews back in October, November, and December. That's all I'm saying. I, I'm saying, give him the opportunity to do that. That's all I'm saying.
We sat here, and no one has said that Mr. Grove can't vote. And as far as what you received prior to being out here, that was not in any way, in any form, an attempt to change anything out here as far as your individual vote. But regardless, what's interesting to me is that we sat here less than forty-eight hours ago, and there were members of this board who said things like, you know, we, we would just like have more information before we make a vote. We would like to, to make sure that we have all of the information we need to make, to make a good decision or to make, be confident about what we're voting, that we want to work together. I believe all of those things are true. And because of that, I think that we need to extend the time that it takes to make sure that every member of the board has all of the information that he or she feels that is needed to make a decision. Again, not to postpone it indefinitely. We're talking about tabling it. It will automatically show up on next month's agenda.
I would like to, I would like to also say, I know I mentioned before, I, when I was elected in December of twenty-three, prior to me being sworn in, I attended a November meeting of which where our superintendent's contract was going to be voted on. I pleaded with the board, table it for a month. I'm going to be serving under him or serving with him, I'd rather. And it's important that I get to make a decision on such an important decision, have a voice for that decision for somebody who maybe I didn't like. And I didn't want to serve with somebody who maybe I didn't like the superintendent, and I wanted to be able to say so. I do think more time is important, and I am always asking for more time. With that said, I'm going to speak to the issues that I have, I have myself very, I have very, I have a lot of concerns. And with that information, you get your month, if that's the way the board votes. You can ask me, "What did you mean by that?" Or what have you? Because this is very important, and I do think that this is a change the district needs. March twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four, Andrews and Price advised that the Committee of the Whole meetings fall under Act sixty-five. However, Act sixty-five does not include work sessions such as Committee of the Whole, conferences, and executive sessions when official is, when official action is not permitted. April eighteenth of twenty-twenty-four, we were advised again that the Committee of the Whole meeting falls under Act sixty-five. July eighteenth of twenty-twenty-four, advised the board president had rights to finalize the agenda in policy zero-zero-five. However, zero-zero-five does not address the agenda setting at all. No board of directors has the power to operate on their own, as we've discussed previously. August twelfth of twenty-twenty-four, Andrews and Price advised agenda setting is addressed in policy zero-zero-six, and that final agenda authority rests with the superintendent. This kind of jumps back a little bit. In twenty-twenty-four, we were advised that we only needed the consensus for the prayer. This year, February, we were advised that the prayer should become district business and official action should be taken with voting. November of twenty-twenty-four, the advice was provided that Dr. Oberkirk was allowed to change the agenda because he changed the information below the agenda title and not the title itself. Per OpenRecords.PA.gov, on August twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one, Senate Bill five-five-four amended the PA Sunshine Act. The agenda should include all issues to be deliberated on and any planned official action such as voting. Additionally, the website states an agenda, I'm sorry, an agency, the board, cannot change the agenda within twenty-four hours provided the changes are de minimis, involve no expenditure of funds, and didn't entail entering into a contract. In the January eighteenth of twenty-four meeting, the board approved for the National Honors Society to host the two blood drives. This is the example that this came from. The first agenda item read, February fourth of twenty-four, and the second one was April of, April third of twenty-four, with an amendment to the item to include parental consent forms to be sent out for students who signed up for the blood drive. But then that was changed within that twenty-four hour mark, not to include any of that verbiage. February twentieth of twenty-twenty-five, our solicitor advised the board that the issue that a constituent wanted to address in executive session was not executive session content, when in fact, it was executive session content as it pertains to personnel. Then the constituent stood at the podium, and the solicitor slipped a note to the board president to advise president to advise him that it's in our policy that she's not allowed to address an individual board member or staff member. March twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-five, allowed the business administrator to discuss, allowed the business administrator to discuss an agenda item, um, that needed to be discussed out in public, which we didn't until the following month when we approved the item. Um, I have very serious concerns about our current solicitor. I understand they've been with us for a long time. I understand that there is value to that. But at what cost? At what cost? Because I personally feel like, I don't feel like it. I believe that our solicitor placed politics with this board, and I don't agree to that, and I don't like that, and our taxpayers are paying for that. So with that, I do agree with having more time, as I've always been. But please, take into consideration those concerns, as well as look at the concerns you've had. Don't overlook them. Don't forget. Please. I think this is very important, and I really truly think this is what's best for our district. It's always good to have a fresh set of eyes on things. We have a solicitor who doesn't even know our policies. We have a solicitor who doesn't even remember month to month what she tells us publicly. I'm sorry. I, I just, I'm pleading with you to please consider the concerns that I have. And when we meet back, if the whole board decides, if the majority of the board decides that we're coming back next month with this, consider it. Thank you.
I think all of us who are asking for that are just asking for the time to have those conversations.
And I wanted to make sure that publicly, you have the information now. Nobody can say they didn't know that, didn't hear that, whatever, not that anybody ever has, but just, it's out there. There's concerns. These are all public issues that are known. Don't forget. Don't brush it off like it's not important. These are minor things that could lead to problems with the school district. And I don't believe that that solicitor, I believe that solicitor argues her way out of it, which is great for us. What if it goes to court? What if she can't argue her way out of it? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to add anything before we vote on the motion to table it until June? Mr. Leisure?
I, I would just like to publicly state, we had a meeting on Tuesday. It was a working budget session meeting so the public could see what we was doing for budget issues and different things. And the motion was made to put this motion on the agenda for tonight, which fell within the twenty-four hour notification that's required. The vote at that meeting was five to four. That's why that added to the agenda. Since that time, there has been a flurry. I guess I don't even really want to go there, but I, I'm very, very, very disheartened by what occurred prior to this meeting. If that doesn't tell you something, nothing ever will. If we table this motion, you're only kicking the can down the road that we can have another several weeks of what we just had in executive session. If you all want to go through that, so be it. I don't.
I would like to...
I'm not done.
I'm sorry. I thought you were. You paused.
We don't have a solicitor tonight sitting here to advise us certain things, which I don't feel very comfortable with. Um, I understand the reasoning behind that. It's very understandable. But when I ask for legal advice, and I'm not provided with it, I have a huge problem with that. I would beg the fellow board members that if you want to continue with what you just went through, to go ahead and table this motion. If you want to try and get something new, I'm not asking anybody. I'm just trying to explain my position. If we want to continue down the current path that we're on, it will only get, I personally believe, a whole lot worse than what it has already gotten to. And I'm deeply troubled by that. Deeply. If at any time we need a solicitor, we need one now. I would again just ask each and every board member, if you want to continue to go through what we did, vote to table this motion. My personal recommendation is that we vote on the motion that the five board members agreed to have put on the agenda on Tuesday. That's all I have to say.
Uh, Mr. Leisure, can I ask you to clarify?
You can ask me anything you'd like, Mrs.
You are saying that a new solicitor is going to fix all of our board problems?
I did not say that.
Oh, that's what I heard. That's, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, if I could ask a question, to be clear, um, our current solicitor is still our solicitor until we make a decision, correct?
Correct.
So we wouldn't be without a solicitor over the next several weeks as we'd go through this process or whatever.
Depends what the terms are.
Yes, but in, and then the other thing I'd just like to say, two things. Number I think everybody can remember back to the time of the pandemic. It was a nightmare for everyone, no matter where you were sitting, if you were a parent, if you were a board member, whatever it was. And I know that there are people in this room who will remember back to the fact that I did not always agree with the solicitor on many issues. But ultimately, the solicitor gave a recommendation, and the majority of the board either decided to follow that recommendation or decided not to follow that recommendation. Some of you will remember that I even served the entire board with a letter of notification that I would not have my rights trampled on, and nor would I stand for the trampling of parental rights. Ultimately, at that time, decisions that were made, and to be clear, it wasn't just McGuffey. Every district was facing the same uncertainties and all of the same issues. But ultimately, at that time, regardless of what the solicitor did or didn't recommend, the majority of the board voted and made decisions as to those, those items at that time. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. The other thing I would add is, I also am disheartened, Mr. Leisure, um, with how this whole thing has taken place. For a lot of members of the board to not have not only agreed to calling another solicitor and asking if they'd be eligible, but not even knowing that that was taking place, is not us working together. It comes across very much as trying to wheedle and manipulate the rest of the board. And that's disheartening when we're all supposed to be working together. And I will tell you, I reacted in that perception, because that's the way it was perceived. If that wasn't the intent, so be it. But I think the whole thing could have been avoided had the board as a collective had a conversation and made a decision as to how to move forward. And that's all we're asking for, is more time to do that together.
I respectfully understand that, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you.
But we would agree to disagree, I hope. If you think that was weaseling and manipulation, what we just came through, I'm not saying anymore because I'm extremely upset, and I rarely ever get upset. And when I do, I'm afraid I might do something that I shouldn't do. Um, but it is very taxing to go through what we just went through. Um, and we unfortunately can't share what we just went through. Um, and that's unfortunate because it, then we don't have transparency. Um, another issue I would just like to bring up, when I sat down at this computer and logged in, I had no idea if that motion was going to be on the agenda or not. That's troubling, especially when you have five board members who voted to have it added. Now it seems like we have a, I personally believe we've created a hostile environment against certain board members, and that is inappropriate. And that's my personal belief as an individual, and have at it. Do whatever everybody would like to do. Uh, I don't want to convince anybody, but I'm sorry.
I would agree. I got a bit of communication that basically don't mean...
Well, I would caution you, Mr. Van Aden, in the fact that what we discuss in executive session needs to stay in executive session, but I know you know a lot more about the law than I do, so you...
Yeah. Can you turn your mic on?
It is executive session topic.
Mr. Van Aden, I would just caution because it could be potential litigation. So I, I, you can do what you want, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
It's definitely going to be litigation, but yeah, so. But, yeah.
We sat here as a board with multiple potentials and don't have anybody in that seat. That's what I'm concerned about.
And I would also agree that I asked for advice from the experts or clarifications, and it's not what that was just happening tonight.
So I'm, I'm going to, I don't know, try to bring this to a point. Um, and I've heard this from several folks, uh, on this board, and I appreciate that, and that's the idea of transparency. I think that's what I've asked this board, uh, before, and I'm asking for again. Um, Mrs. Fry brings up a great point because I remember at the time being frustrated because I wanted to have that contact, but out of respect, I understood there was new members coming on, and you wanted time to vet that. And so that's where I'm at right now. Like, we've always, to this point, so it came to hiring something as important as your school solicitor, we've always gone through a process. And that process is bringing in those individual, um, law firms that were interested in working with us to discuss as a collective, not as individual. And that, as I shared in the executive, was my concern with the whole process to this point. It has not followed the proper way. I'm sleeping at that. So all I'm, I'm saying again, and all I'm asking for, because we talked about it, I heard transparency, maybe not the same way I heard this week, we talked about transparency certainly, is let's have that. Let's continue to have that transparent approach, which I think will define everything we do from here on in. So, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to roll call the vote. Ms. Diver?
This is the vote to table.
Table. So yes to table, no to not table it.
Mr. Fry? Will you please come back to me?
I'm yes to table. Mr. Leisure?
No, I would never recommend table in this issue.
Mr. Varnett? No to table. Ms. Chingle?
Yes, to table. And my reasoning is just because of the fact, the way that we did it last time, you know, we decided that as a group, decided that to go through that process of bringing people in so that we could all hear from them. That just did not happen at all this time. It was just a portion of the group two days ago. I'm, I'm just not going to be rushed to make that vote. So yes to table.
Mr. Van Aden?
I would like to table it, but only if we add the agenda item, as I requested previously, that old business be put on the agenda and this be listed on it until it is addressed.
But my understanding is that it was the old business that was beyond the agenda as an agenda item.
I understand, but I, we do not have an old business agenda.
But what I'm saying is, I don't think we need one.
Mrs. Jordan?
This is what I'm asking. I understand that. We've discussed that previously.
But I just, to be clear, if you table it, it automatically appears as an agenda item next month, correct?
It would have a, it would be on there.
I just wanted to be clear. Thank you. Mr. Grove?
Yes. Motion carries. It'll appear on the June board meeting. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to, um, express my concern that we're not represented by counsel tonight. I would make a motion that we, uh, immediately adjourn this meeting and come back at a time when we do have counsel.
Under P A School Code, you are allowed to...
I understand that. I understand that.
We, I would caution, we need a bunch of time.
Well, I apologize. I guess I would state that do the budget and everything else, because there's just so many issues that we need legal counsel on.
I'm going to make a recommendation to put your asking for justice back. We also have pending hire for our business office. We can also put that.
I would agree.
Could we not also do monthly items? I mean, that seems kind of pointless to put forward.
She, she was my voice when we discussed it and, uh, exactly.
I'll ask her if that's the case, um, because this is something that we want to have kind of per with our existing staff, uh, that where we would probably, if this were retroactive, Mr. Leisure, I'll...
What can, that's fine, but what is exactly the motion? Can you just clarify the motion?
Can we discuss a little bit further?
Sure.
I would ask Dr. Oberg, what is of utmost importance
Pressing.
Pressing to put on the agenda tonight? And then we table everything else. I understand, Ms. Holbichoff, we have to pass her budget. And I think, if I remember correctly, there's a position that maybe we need to hire for. I don't have any problems with them, and I would defer to Dr. Oberg of any other issues. Other than that, if we agree, we need to do that and be done.
So schedule bills, so we can pay, uh, our, our bills. That would be something that I would absolutely have. Of course, preliminary budget and
How about graduates? The graduates, do we have to?
Oh, the graduates. Yes, thank you. There's a list of graduates, um, that you need to approve, so they can
Graduate.
I did see, schedule bills fall under the monthly action item. Could we not just do the monthly action items? What about the
Why they're looking at that. Chief Deminsky, are you available next Thursday?
What about the homebound instructions?
I don't know that it matters, but I know I have a graduation.
Class are over.
I have a graduation.
Do the homebound instructions have to be done? Are they time sensitive?
Homebound instruction, I'm gonna go back to that. The only other thing I'd say is, and again, it's something that we could have on the June, uh, is the fitness center. That would push back our start times to renovate that by a few months. So our, our goal was to have that helping ready after the facilities had started, quick tear down to the very beginning of August. So that there's those four teams in, uh, athletic schools, E, they could use that facility. So it was about twenty-three days, wait, or that.
Are any of the donation items time sensitive?
No, the donation is not.
Okay.
Uh, so outside of the general bill, um,
And the hiring.
And graduates.
No, we need to do all E.
All of the monthly actions?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so too. So all of the monthly actions? And then, uh, G, we're doing one? Do we need to do, well, four is just the first reading. We're not taking action on that, correct?
No, and, um, getting the first reading was nothing there. Only you that can wait. Um, the application for homebound, uh, is something that, um, they're asking for currently. Um, so I would also recommend that those people
So G one, two, and three?
Um, left filter is something that we're, we're still gonna have it come at the beginning of school year. Um, so that can wait.
Okay, and then H?
The donations or something.
H one?
H one and two?
Which is, can't say a whole. So I noticed Van Aden had just said that maybe that's not something that we should share with Dr. Holbichoff. I did think so, that he could prove that certainly. And then, um, two, Ed Dalton, he is with us through the N F J, so he is pretty much all.
But three and four we need to, or no?
So three, yes. So three is the, uh, an agreement with Commissions. I actually have this long shot.
Prefer to open it now so that we can have it.
And then, uh, Laura, this is for her effective July first. So if you wanna do it, I may as soon as I can.
What about the
Is there any way that maybe all the items that were listed, that we could not close this meeting, but reconvene on?
You can motion to adjourn, or you can motion to I forget the wording, but postpone to reconvene, reconvene. You can motion to reconvene.
Reason why we need a solicitor.
Yeah.
Well, I was under always the impression that you couldn't adjourn a meeting. It had to be a continuation or you had to advertise. There's a lot of things that I don't know, and unfortunately, I
You can make a motion to reconvene so that you're not ending the meeting and the meeting will finish. We've done that, and that's the wording that was used. You can make a motion to reconvene the meeting at a certain date or time in the future, and your meeting doesn't officially close. It's just going to continue at that state of time. I, I do have a question. Wait, I just want to be clear. Um, the F S A, uh, conference, does that need to be approved tonight?
So the conference is gonna be, uh, before the next quarter.
Yeah.
Again, yes, I think you've best of all.
So that's six.
No.
That's six, correct? And then the budget, is that all?
That's rather difficult.
All right, you got everything. All right, all right, so first we have to address the motion on the floor, um, from Mr. Leisure. And the motion is to address the items that need addressed this evening and then, um, reconvene the meeting at a later time.
Uh, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Same time, same place.
I can't be here, but okay. I have a graduation that day. Yeah, that's No.
No, we can cut that out in three days.
Tuesday. What about Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday would be
Mr. Leisure, Wednesday would be better for Ms. Fry. Oh, yeah, that's probably not a good day.
How about Friday? No?
Next Friday is the twenty
Well, if we're taking care of all of the business, can we just adjourn and then meet next month? Like we've already, like his original thing was, if we take care of what's immediate. Then everything else can wait till we need it.
Mr. Leisure, are you okay with that?
Then you don't have to worry about advertising again.
What's that? Oh, wait, I think we are though. We are tonight though. Yeah, we're taking care of all the appointments and hiring.
I would just ask for the superintendent, the president of the board, and the business manager to have motions that is required, and then we could, uh, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. So that's the motion, Aaron, uh, Mr. Van Aden, you seconded it, correct? And you still second under that condition? Okay.
Do you think it needs change, Mr. Van Aden, before you second this? I mean, I, I don't know.
Okay. All those, does anybody need to recap what we're doing?
We are
We are voting to
On the necessary items as
Well, the motion on the floor is to make sure we vote on the necessary items deemed necessary by the superintendent, the business manager, and the president of the board. And then that, um, we'll reconvene, um, next month. Or, or do you still want to try and Doc said the rest of the stuff could wait till next month because it's just monthly items, but Yeah, absolutely. I'll tell you what, how about we vote on Right. Budget, we have to vote on, so, and roll call, but no. Oh, is that what you're asking? I'm sorry. I'm, I, I got you.
What happens if there are
I'm confused.
I don't know if we can
We, we can, so yes, we can take items under E first. There's three of them. Item two is approval of general funds schedules, um, bills. Item three is approval of food service, uh, schedule billables. And then number five is G B series, uh, twenty-four dollars. We need those to be approved. We're gonna bundle that together and say here
Oh, that's what he means.
I believe so, yep.
And then I'm sorry, I'm just really confused about what we're doing.
Let's do this original motion first. Let's do the original motion first because we're getting ahead of ourselves. So all those in favor of Mr. Leisure's original motion of making sure we vote on the necessary items tonight and then adjurting the meeting to a, to another time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's going to be to next month, next Monday.
It's going to be to, are you okay with that, Mr. Leisure?
Because that will
No, but I'll agree with you.
That will also cover our advertising. It's being announced now. We wouldn't have to pay more for that.
So with that, no, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Yes, Ms. Fry.
Okay. I would like to make sure that we are still going to allow the public participation for the non-agenda, agenda non-agenda.
I, I don't have a problem with it, yeah. Yeah, they came, they stayed. I don't have a problem with it.
I would agree, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
Need I make a part of that much?
Yeah, that's fine.
Items for discussion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify since we were talking about specific things from this agenda, we were, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of problems. All right, with that said, we're E two? We didn't do E one?
Nope. E two, E three.
I would make a motion that we adopt E one, two, three, four, and five.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Okay. Um, under G, we have candidates graduation. Um, and then we also have, uh, G two, application for homebound, and G three.
G one, two, and three, I make a motion that we
Before we do that, let's, can we do, I'm sorry, Mr. Leisure, can we do G one separately just because it's the seniors? And I tell you what, yeah. You Yeah, I know what, yeah, I got you. All right, I need a motion to approve the list of candidates from the McGuffey High School class of 2025 for the purpose of awarding the high school diploma provided the requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the McGuffey School District have been fully satisfied.
Don't move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations to the hundred and forty seniors. All right, now, the, under G, we are
G two and three, application for homebound instructions.
All right, we have a motion to, um, lump together G two and three, application for homebound instruction.
I'll move.
Second?
Second, oh, right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries.
Okay, if you have anything else, uh, H would be next. Uh, H one is the accountable specialist.
Okay.
Um, I would also recommend including the resignation for Dalton at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, three, a confidential employee agreement. And for doing that, I'd also recommend Laura Sybert for confidential secretary.
I need a motion to hire Leanne Crutt as accounts payable specialist as per terms and conditions of the accounts payable specialist employment agreement pending receipt of all required clearances, Act 168, medical exams.
Don't move, I'm, oh, sorry. Did I get off, yeah.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Congratulations to Leanne. I need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number one, seven, four, six, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
Don't move, second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with post and advertise for that position at this time until we figure a budget out.
All right, it, it, it's necessary, so yeah. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say, um, or can I say, since we're notifying him by number, we're identifying.
I, I, I tell you what, I'll go. Can I go?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Coach Dalton for his many years of service and all that he's done. Um, we haven't always agreed, I, he and I, but I do appreciate, he truly has a heart for the kids. And that's always been evident.
I will say, I, I would like to personally say before we vote on it, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't. I wish he was here, but he was at the thought. Um, I wouldn't be where I am today, um, if not for Coach Dalton. He gave me a start thirteen, thirteen years ago now in coaching, uh, at, at the higher level. And, um, he opened doors for me. He showed me how an athletic director job works. He showed me how the administration job works. Um, he helped me get into the college level. And, um, as I shared with certain members of this board, um, I was reached out by a school in Oklahoma today. So it, I owe him tremendously everything. So what he did here at McGuffey, for anybody that doesn't know, when he showed up, he and I showed up in two thousand and twelve. Um, I was one of his first hires. And what he did to this program, they were O and ten the year before. He never had a losing record after that. Um, and that's just, just speaks volumes of the man he is. Um, it wasn't just football. He made every sport better. The basketball team under his athletic director guidance won their first ever state playoff game. Um, a, and the coaches love coaching under him, and the kids love him, and he gets everybody interested. Um, the raps you see around the school, he had a big influence in that. Um, we're losing a, um, ambassador of the district, and I just want to say thank you to him.
In the past couple of years, this donation drive that he set in place, I mean, that is just amazing. And we really are blessed to have, to have him with us.
We are, and, uh
He really did a lot for encouraging students to do multiple sports too. Before, before he came, that wasn't the case. Um, coaches didn't encourage it, and kids didn't do it. And so we have a lot of students who are, um, playing multiple sports, and that's largely because of him.
With that said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Dalton was awesome. He created a lot of opportunities, that's all right. Um, I think he, the positive atmosphere and morale that he brought was very helpful for the district as a whole. But what everybody does have to recognize is, he's a unique, in, he's a unique person because he's not actually I want to say this, but he's not in any union or any, he's a contract employee that has absolutely no benefits and a flat fee. And he saved the district, in my estimation, probably about one point two to two million dollars since he's been here in the cost of that salary. That's why I'm concerned about posting and advertising.
Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next would be the confidential employee agreements.
Three and four.
Yeah, the mouse, I have the wrong mouse.
Three and four?
I need a, uh
I think we're doing them separately?
Separately. I need a motion to approve the early opening of the confidential employee compensation plan, which was set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Don't move, second.
Any discussion?
Could you remind us, Charlie, why did we have that now?
The contract specifically named there's employees and upon retiring.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the employment agreement with Ms. Laura Sybert as confidential secretary to the superintendent of schools, effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty, for the terms and conditions of the confidential secretary to the superintendent of schools' compensation plan.
Don't move, second.
Discussion? All those
Is there a legal requirement on a date to have this submitted?
No, I mean, this would be something that would be effective for her.
What?
Her current contract is expired.
So, um, Mrs. Sybert, don't take this wrong at all, please. Like if the vote were just for you, it would be a yes. But did we ever review this in executive session, the contract?
We did not tonight.
Would we have the opportunity to do so before voting?
It's still on the agenda since Friday.
It's, it's an attachment.
People tend to discuss it in executive session? Could we do that, please?
So I would need a
Motion to table?
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to table, uh, this, until we can review the contract together in executive So I'd like to make a motion to table this until we could review the contract together in executive session.
Second.
Discussion, oh, well, we discussed it earlier, so, discussion? All those in favor to tabling item H four until the June meeting. Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
We do a roll call. I'm sorry, Sybert, for the roll call. Can we trust you keeping tally?
Okay.
Wait, is it-
It's the table.
So yes to table, no to not table?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Lasure?
No.
Mr. Varney?
Yes.
Ms. Jamel?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Renato?
No.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
No. Six, three. So back to the item H four, we had a motion and a second, correct? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Anybody abstaining? Motion carries, seven, two, correct?
Be clear, my vote is for you, Mrs. Sybert, because I would like to have the chance to review the contract.
Next, I'd ask that we vote for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six department grade level chairs. As soon as we give them information, I'll send them to next year.
Which, which one is that, that's H five?
The very next one.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the department grade level chairperson for the term July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as presented per the MEA collective marketing agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you. The next one we should, because it's the actor.
Yep.
It's the application to attend a conference, number six.
I need a motion to approve Renee Cambruzy and John Lasure to chaperone and attend with members of the McGuffey FFA, the Pennsylvania FFA State Convention on June tenth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, at a cost of two hundred dollars in transportation costs, which would be gas, tolls, and parking.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I just always come, we always come back to this, and we're so confused on, like, what events the school pays for versus FFA paying for, and what's in their budget and what's not. The two hundred dollars registration, is that in their budget?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I'm always confused about that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, abstained, John's my son. Motion carries, eight, zero, one.
Next item would be under, another aye for business, number two, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, preliminary budget.
Do you want a-
I make a motion that we approve option C of our preliminary budget.
And that's, is that the highest of the index? Is that the one?
Yes.
Different, yes.
Okay, sorry.
I second then.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve option C and a second. Any other motions for any other option?
So we do a vote on that and then go from there?
I think if that's the only motion.
Yeah.
If that's the only motion, then we don't need to.
And that is the one you're recommending?
Okay.
Is there any other motions? Any other discussions before we vote? It will be a roll call vote.
You got it, yeah.
Roll call, Ms. Sybert.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lasure?
Yes.
Mr. Varney?
Yes.
Ms. Jamel?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Renato?
Yes.
Ms. Frye?
With a very heavy heart and mind, yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes. Preliminary budget passes, nine, zero.
Next item I have is I four, web filters subscription purchase.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and Securly for the purchase of a new web filter for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year at a cost of eleven thousand fifty-five dollars.
I second.
There, we already had a motion, I can see second it. He motioned it, I think, I'll take yours as a second.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I can hear him.
Uh, Mr. Lasure, man.
Is the microphone on? I didn't hear you.
I didn't know why you were ringing.
My microphone is on.
He does, he motioned it, you second it.
I thought that's what he wanted.
You got that, Miss Sybert? Okay.
So the motion hasn't changed?
Mm-mm.
Okay, when you were saying it, I thought you were asking to amend it, okay.
No, 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 I just didn't-
He missed her whole job.
That's okay, I just-
No, I didn't think that anybody had stated it, and I thought you were asking for something.
No, 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 he had motioned it, and I was-
Well, I apologize, I didn't hear him.
No, you're good, Mrs. Jackson. Um, alright, any more discussion on it?
I would like to say that this product is cheaper than the products that we're using currently and has more capabilities, so-
It's ten percent cheaper and about twelve hundred dollars cheaper per year. Mr. Wilson, thank you. And Missy Harberstock.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries.
Dr. Ober, I apologize, I didn't understand what you're saying, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Ober, if you was involved, thank you. Sorry.
Last item I have is number five, fitness center.
Alright, need a motion to approve fifty thousand dollars to be taken from the capital projects account to update the fitness center.
So moved. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes, if we could have-
Mrs. Jackson first?
Mrs. Harberstock, you said you would answer this question we asked earlier.
Yes, we currently have a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in our capital projects fund. This is not bond money, it's money we have set aside for capital projects. Mr. McKee and I have looked at the amount of interest that has accrued in that account over the years that we've had it, and we would basically be putting the fifty thousand dollars of accrued interest into this fitness center. We also have funding from various places, Highmark Grant, seventy-five hundred, T-Mobile already provided us a five thousand dollar grant, we have not used it all, so three thousand of that will be used. The alumni group has agreed to donate two thousand dollars. If we move forward with this project, we do not have to have our service agreement with Tri-State Contract, which is a company that comes in and services and looks at our equipment every year to make sure it's still good. That's six thousand dollars, so we move that money into the renovation project. We have money in the athletic funds right now. We're going to use fifteen thousand of that, so that's not new money. And then with the renovations, the booster organizations have agreed to take on the cost of the huddle software that's used for the athletics, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars. So we would lose that twenty-five thousand dollars and just redirect it to the fitness center.
So what are capital projects?
So capital projects would be anything that really has to do with renovations and upkeep in of our facilities and maintenance, things like that.
And then is that this comes from the accrued interest?
This is, has been accruing interest, obviously, over the years. This fund, we can always put money out of our general fund budget into capital fund projects. It's not bond money.
And what, and the balance, we're taking fifty thousand of a hundred and forty-four?
Yes.
So the balance would continue to accrue interest, correct?
Balance will continue to accrue interest, and Mr. McKee has looked at the balance and knows the kinds of upkeep he needs to do, specifically on the Joe Walker boiler, do believe, and he has enough money. We also had a conversation today, because in his general budget for renovations and upkeep, we have not spent nearly what I had budgeted for that for this year, so we always have that money to fall back on as well. And I will also say, I've been in talks with three different companies about sponsorship, so I'm hoping that we can just get the whole project paid and not have to use any of our funding. Like Mr. Dalton had said when he presented this, they do like to see a finished product before putting their name on something, so I'm continuing those talks, and hopefully they will be fruitful and we will just get this paid for.
So it would be more like we would pay for it and then they would-
Yeah, and be reimbursed and we go back into that fund.
I'm trying to think of all the questions that were asked earlier, but I think one of them was, does this capital project account deplete at any time?
Well, it could deplete, it's depending on what we do. We could always move money out of our general fund budget into a capital projects account.
And there's no limit on that, or any kind of requirement? Other than the money is used for capital projects?
Exactly. If it's capital projects earmarked, we have to use it for capital projects.
And if we were moving money, that would be part of the budget, we would budget to move money.
Correct. Thank you for answering all those questions, I think we got them all. Melissa? Did we, I'm a yes for the fitness center, but did we look at any other spaces when we were considering renovating the space? I'm sure Mr. Dalton looked-
You may, just to clarify, you meant like in the districts or in the high school?
In the, in the building.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Dalton said he named a couple.
Well, so we had major upgrades, of course, to the high school, the main ones before, the lighting.
No, no, I mean, like the library is an open space.
Oh.
Like, did you visit?
Certainly, we have other designs, as I've shared in the past. Slow at this point because of funding, but we have other designs for the library to use that more as a resource for clubs. We have a space for children, maybe possibly some other school counselors in there. We've looked at having a multi-maker space as part of that.
I remember, because I remember Trinity has their maker spaces sponsored by PPG. And when I was thinking about that, because you had originally presented it as a maker space, and then Mr. McKee presented it as the child space guidance counselor business, but this is a moot point, but I'm still going to make my suggestion because I feel like I need to. I was just thinking it's kind of the centralized hub for the high school, middle school, and it would have been nice to maybe see the fitness center have the opportunity to be there and then have your little Mc Cafe, and then have your maker space. And it probably would have served, but it could have served the community in that, in that respect as well, because it, it might have sought better sponsorship because it's a bigger space and there's more things to do, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Melissa.
I would just like to ask, Miss Oliver, this capital projects fund is not part of our general budget? So when we say that we have X amount of money in our general fund, we actually have more than that?
Yes, there's like our bond money and stuff work from that as well as capital projects.
Hmm, I thought those are-
Do we have any idea what those might be? And I don't, I hate to put you on the spot, so no, I'm not going to ask that question. If we'd have that, maybe discussion for next meeting.
Well, I will tell you, the COB bond payment that you just approved tonight, that wipes out that bond. So that one's done.
Thank you.
And those, like the capital project account, that's money that is line item specifically, you can't use that for anything else?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I wanted to add.
That's right, you have something.
Yeah, I'm trying not to forget it before I get to that. You might have just answered that with your question, but with, with the capital fund or the, the capital projects account, the question was asked, or statement was made about moving money. Money can be moved from that to, but not out of it. Once it's there, it's there.
Capital fund.
Now, is that a legal thing, or is that a procedural thing, or is that just what McGuffey does? Okay, that's what I wasn't sure, because I'm thinking of this deficit, and I'm like, if we have all this money, save some of it for what we need it for, but then let's use it for, okay. That was why I asked, because I was thought, I was almost positive that it had to be specifically for that.
Sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Mr. President, before we go forward, the more I think about it, I think we need to set a date and time to discuss the solicitor process prior to next month's meeting, because I don't want to be sitting here doing the same thing that we are doing this month, next month.
Mr. Lasure, I was actually going to ask that we decide tonight under our board comment.
I apologize, Mrs.
No, 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 it's okay, but rather than set a date where we're meeting again, we could probably figure something out how we're going to proceed tonight before we meet tonight in that section under board comments, I don't know if that's-
What, couldn't we do that in executive session? Because we need to go back to executive session, correct?
Well, I think it would help for the public to know as well how we're going to move forward with that specifically. Like, are we going to be interviewing, or are we just going to, like, are we going to put out an RFP? Or, you know, what, how are we going to move forward with it?
Very good question, Mrs. Frye.
Thank you.
So I mean, if we're going to discuss a date, I think absolutely something we can do here, if we're going to talk about how we're going to go about the process, I'd rather that be something in executive session. We're going to go to that afterwards, we still have to have Chief Zeminski present to us our school safety report, so that'll be directly after this.
Alright.
So we're picking a date?
We are going to take public comment on non-agenda and agenda items at this time.
Mr. President, are we picking a date then or not?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we will.
Alright. Under the old-
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
We'll just go right down the order.
Mm-hmm.
Ten seconds.
Yep.
Mr. President called Tiffany Walker, South Franklin County.
Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
Is there any way somebody can increase the air conditioner in here, or have we saving money, or? I mean, it's boiling up here.
And I prefer the president to pay attention while I'm speaking.
I kind of thought that maybe you had a hand in it.
You're good. I'm just waiting for everybody to pay attention, I'm up here speaking, I would like to respect that, thank you. But I don't care, I'm up here now. You have done, okay, that's fine. You have done, you have done a lot of little discussion, it needs to stop, this is respectful. Your best to all work together regardless, stop the whispering, I'm over it. I'm over it, you look like a fool, stop the whispering. Anyways, I'm going to read another parent towards you guys, towards the school board. They want you to know this, I'm going to read this from a parent, another letter. Dear members of McGuffey School Board District, I'm willing to express serious concerns regarding the district's current bullying and disciplining policies, particularly how they are being applied to student conflicts. My son, a tenth grade student at McGuffey High School, has been subject to traumatic experience and believe reflects major gaps in how bullying is addressed and how students are protected. My son was harassed and physically assaulted on the school bus despite clear video evidence showing that he was provoked and attacked, including another student dumping water on him, initiating physical contact. My son received the same punishment as the aggressor. He was suspended, forced to attend court, and ordered to take a victim awareness class. Meanwhile, the bully behavior and ongoing false activizations from other students have gone largely unchecked. What makes this situation even more upsetting is that I tried to prevent it. That day, my son texted me asking to pick up from school because he was afraid. Immediately called the school and spoke to Jody White, requested that my son be moved on the bus due to harassment. I was told to call back in twenty minutes to speak with Mr. Stoy. During my conversation with Mr. Stoy, the fight broke out. This shows a serious failure on the part of the administration to take early warning signs seriously and protect students in real time. Since this incident, my son has became withdrawn, fearful of returning to school, emotionally exhausted. During his suspension, he refused to eat, barely sleep, and feared that his future would be ruined by further false claims or conflict. I am urging the board to take a closer look at your bullying policy as it stands. A policy that punishes victims equally with aggressors is not only unjust, it's damaging. Self-defense should not be treated as an offense. Students are being harassed repeatedly and who have made efforts to avoid conflict should be protected, not penalized. Furthermore, there needs to be an accountable for students who make false claims to provoke or escalate situations. My son is not the only one affected by this behavior. I have asked that the board consider the following. Review and revise the bullying and discipline policies. Two, include a better investigation procedures, clear- Two, include a better investigation procedures, clear distinctions between self-defense and aggression. Two, implant safeguards for victims of bullying, including timely seating changes, class schedule adjustments, and emotional support services. Three, adjust patterns of false reporting and peer manipulation, which not only affect target students, but also undermine the integrity of the school environment. Four, ensue safe responses when parents report concerns of harassment, delays in action only lead to escalation and preventable harm. Every student deserves to feel safe and supported in their education environment. I hope the board will take this matter seriously and take steps towards meaningful policy changes that puts students' well-being and fairness first. Sincerely, Amanda Avalar, a parent of McGuffey. She's also in South Franklin. I've had all these parents come out to me after my last trip here, meaning, Mr. Kern, you were not here. And what I'm saying is, you, you have that seat because we voted you there. We, we expect you to protect. You don't have to watch my time. I know my timer. You should be watching me. I expect you all get together-
I'll watch your screen, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I expect you all to get, I mean, more acid, please don't, please don't. I would like, no, I would like the same respect that the rest of them want respect, okay? I, I don't need to do anything. You don't have to shut me up. This is my First Amendment to come to you. You sit there because of us. So let me sit there and also sit there. You have a principal yelling at a frigging teacher that does anything for this school this past month, screaming in front of both tech kids. You're going to do your job, I'll do my job. Why are you speaking like that in front of students? Let's talk about that. Let's start where the bullying is coming from is your own officials. I will sit here and I will scream until you get it through your head that our kids are protected and you're taking down our school. We got super excited, non-answering parents that I've been told. Avalar says she tried to contact you. I, I just don't understand. I don't understand the ignorance of this board. Especially since tonight is the first time I got to see you here. And you, Mr. Kern, are very ignorant and disrespectful. People sit here talking very, oh, everybody sees it. I'm sure everybody can sit here and say, you are a jerk. I'd like to call you more, but I'm trying to be respectful. Something you might need to learn. You sit there because of us. You need to give us respect. It seems like if it ain't your way, it's no way. You ain't the only one on this board. Remember that. You could be voted off too when the time comes too, correct? I'm very upset how disrespectful you are. I'll be happy to. I'd be happy to.
Mr. President, we call Vicki Jordan Buffalo Township.
Can you remove her for cursing, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, that is a violation.
That's First Amendment right. I have anything to say. I don't want to be whatever. I would like respect.
You are being disruptive to this meeting, ma'am, and I'm asking you to-
I'm walking away. You're going to kick me out, right?
I understand. Just because it happened, that doesn't mean it should happen to somebody else.
I need a minute.
Chief. Let me move to the next. Is that what you mean?
No, I'm just trying to catch my breath.
Okay. Mr. President, Vicki Jordan Buffalo Township.
Vicki Jordan Buffalo Township. Anytime. Well, then can you restart my time? Yeah, I need a minute too.
I'm sorry, are you making a motion for a recess?
I'm making a motion with two minutes left.
Can we take a-
Second.
Second.
Do you have a timeframe? Five minutes? Five, five.
I would prefer five.
All those in favor for a five-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Did you say nine forty-one?
I don't even know, honey. I don't. I've lost track.
So does that get tracked? There's no record of anybody using it?
That's a good question. This is so much. Maybe she just shouldn't leave. Question is, like, should be, that's really, you don't want to drop much already, right?
Captain, do you want it? Yep.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you, Mr. Newberry.
Yes.
I'll see you Tuesday.
I think I'm running out of time and I'm working, but I will be here. Can you leave the cover for me?
I don't know if I was going to say one or two.
Yeah, well, and I, well, and I was going to say, I do think it might, and I believe that much of like, he's what's at all, but your primary really is Gary, really is Buffalo, because you are being depressed and everything, and you're there. You're running on a toast? If you want to be there for some of the toast, I would say it's the end of the year. A lot of people, like, on the way north, a lot of people wouldn't have done this, and like, you could, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Oh, my goodness, I made it back in time. I wasn't even looking. I just-
Nine forty-two, we are reconvening and continue with the public comment on non-agenda and agenda items. Ms. Jordan, Chief.
Mrs. Jordan, I'm sorry, but I got to say something before you speak. With all due respect, President, we just threw out a student. I'm sorry. What we are going through is just wrong. Emotions are running so high tonight, and I, I get that. But, man, I'm, I'm going to shut up. But I apologize to the man and her son publicly.
Mr. Leisure, I was let out when you were vice president. Just saying.
Mrs. Shingle, I'll correct you. I asked Mr. Group to throw several people out when I was vice president. Mr. Group never threw anybody out.
Oh, yes, he did.
No, he did not.
The point is, it doesn't matter.
He never threw anybody out.
It's still not right to happen now. It wasn't right then and it isn't right now.
That's okay.
Vicki Jordan Buffalo Township. I think tonight makes it really clear, anytime you speak against or cross Mr. Kern, he's going to have you tossed out of the room. He's tried to do it to me. Violate my First Amendment rights and see what happens because then I will get into turn and I will sue the crap out of this district. How dare you? That child was sitting there with his mother. How dare you? You don't care. You roll your eyes. I'm done with you. I also want to say, I don't understand how you guys can sit here and not vote for a solicitor because Mr. Grove is new. And then you turn around and you vote, no offense, Mrs. Seibert, you vote for a five-year contract that is longer than you're all on the board. A five-year contract without it being reviewed or discussed for Mr. Grove's ability. Chad Thomas asked you to table it for that very reason. And suddenly you decided it wasn't important enough, but it was important enough when it came to the solicitor. I apologize for anybody I'm about to offend, but right now I think you're a bunch of hypocrites. It's good one way, but it's not good the other. I'm so upset with all of you. You know, you've been talking about the budget and you start, and Dr. Oberg, you talked about starting earlier. But you've known for the last two years that we're in a difficult financial situation. So why aren't you, why weren't you proactive about recommendations sooner? How do you justify hiring a teacher if the information is accurate that only teaches six students? How is that financially responsible? Seems to me that the administration needs to do a full overload and a full overhaul of the classroom schedules. I'm sure it's a big task, but with the hard times we're in, seems like one you need to take on. I'd also like to know who's advised the board to go from employee names to numbers. The public has a right to know who's residing from this district. It's not transparent and it's not okay. We just started doing this. Why? I want, I promised somebody I would do this at the last meeting and I didn't. Joe Walker has always been a topic of conversation about closing. That was calm for a lot of years. A year ago, Mr. Kern brought that up and it put the community into an uproar. It was swept under the carpet. It wasn't addressed the next month as it was supposed to on the agenda. So can we clear the air tonight and calm these parents down and let them know that Joe Walker is not on the chopping block? Those parents shouldn't have to worry if their kid, where their kids are going to be in school. So if Joe Walker isn't on the table, then please put it to rest. They deserve to know this. Again, I, I wanted to come up here and thank everybody for the courage to hire that, keep the first grade teacher in Clayville and hire the fifth grade teacher, but I just, I can't look at any of you right now. Any of you. Don't speak to me, Mr. Kern. Say your apologies.
Chief. Yes, Mr. President, Justin Capola, South Franklin Township.
So I noticed many things. Just so that the public knows, the vice president, the president, the solicitor, the superintendent, and the business manager who sets the agenda. Each and every one of these individuals up here have all the information about all the solicitors. When I make a bid to someone's house, I know that there's two or three other individuals that are there. They got all the information already. What you saw is shenanigans. At any point, they literally, after I speak right now, just so you guys know, they can appoint the new solicitor that's primed and ready to go. But I guarantee you during that executive session, AMP was on the phone making sure, telling you everything you need to know. They're a thug, they're a bully. And you wonder why there's a bullying problem? It's literally reflecting the president, the vice president, and the solicitor. Clearly, it is a bully. So it's, I don't even have to be in those sessions to know that God sees what goes in those sessions. You might be able to hide behind these semantics. I know full well, you guys are full of it, not all of you. I know that Andrew and Price is probably throwing out litigation. But it seems that you're so loyal to a solicitor above the children that clearly are being bullied here because of a reflection of what they're doing behind the scenes. There might be certain individuals that actually have noticed a lot of these things happening in executive meeting, but this public, this public won't ever know. They just won't. But you continue to waste our tax dollars going back to Andrew and Price. You know, if I had to go to a customer who repeatedly asked me for a bid and never went with me, eventually what AMP is doing is driving all of these other solicitors out that they'll be the only option because they're too much of a coward to be here. And yet you're paying them right now and I'm sure that at least text messages. Because Dr. Oberg, you made it quite like a point that you knew exactly that you can operate as a board just fine without a solicitor because the sovereignty that we are given here in America. It's very, very sad, the politics that are taking place. It's very, very unfortunate that they're making you and bullying you not to speak. You have every right to speak right now. Guess what? If there's any type of legalities, litigation, if you say anything, oh, my goodness, oh, hold it. I don't see one parent that's ready to literally be on top of you to sue you for everything that you've got. I noticed and have done so much work here in McGuffey that the parents and the people here, Democrat, Republican, Independent, non-affiliated, I talk to everybody and it's consistent across the board on all the school districts that I noticed that these solicitors here in Washington County are bullies, thugs, and they need to be broken up. So if you want to have this loyalty that you're going to literally lay, die on that hill, I have no idea why you can forget COVID and what they did to us. There's an individual to the left of me who literally ran on wanting to get a new solicitor unanimously at that time. Voted for Andrew and Price, pulled several other law firms during that time, wasted their time, played semantics while not having certain ones be able to get into the remote interview. A lot of this stuff falls through the cracks because they don't pay attention. I do. I don't need to be on that board to make a difference. I don't ever really think that, I actually think I can do something better here than I can do up there because- because I know what goes on behind the scenes. You already made up your mind. I don't, I can't pinpoint how it works, but Andrew and Price is a thug. They are literally bleeding us dry, and you're allowing it. You are allowing it. There's like a two that takes place, this power. Give it to them. Stop having it and give it to them. You were elected to give them the power because at one point you all were on this side. Every single one of you. But it seems what power can do to an individual is evidently something that certain individuals on this board want to, you know, hold on to with Andrew and Price. So if you want to have that be the staple of this school district, make it clear, move it on, and then play the semantics, I don't care. If I was on that board, I would have motioned to fire them, realize that I can apply to somebody and have someone replaced in a week. You guys wanna pull it through the mud, and I'm sure it's difficult for you, the semantics, because you probably have to give, put it out in the paper, which costs money, and then you have to put it out there, and then repeat the process over again as you all witness these politics. And you can stare me in the eye all you want. I can tell when power has changed someone because I certainly can say this really quickly. Because wounds from a sincere friend are better than many kisses from an enemy. And all Andrew and Price has been doing has been kissing and kissing and kissing and manipulating and trying to be a thug. It needs to end.
Mr. President, this is Jessica Pugh, Claysville Borough. Thank you.
Jessica Pugh, Claysville Borough. I had Mrs. Tildre actually reach out to me and ask if I could just read a few updates and things that have been going on in her Life Skills classroom. The varsity, they went to a varsity baseball game, one of the McGuffey varsity baseball games on May 1st. They had the honor of hosting our McFriends Club for a special pre-game celebration. Each student got a chance to step onto the field and throw out the first pitch. Let us tell you, they brought the heat. A huge thank you to the varsity baseball team for working with us to make this happen. Life Skills, sixth through 12th grade, had a Mother's Day luncheon. They had, they recently hosted their heartfelt and successful luncheon to honor their mothers and grandmothers. Students planned a menu, shopping list, prepared the food, decorated the space, took orders, and served their guests. Students worked with a floral design class and crafted beautiful handmade souvenirs as thoughtful gifts. It was truly a special day filled with love and gratitude for the incredible women who support and advocate for them every day. On May 14th, the sixth through 12th Life Skills class participated in the Stars Prom. The reason for this event is to give our students a prom just for them with the support they need to have as much fun as possible. This is an inclusive event, so regular ed partners are invited as well. The Friends joined these students for this event. And lastly, as for myself, I would like to give a shout out to our 2025 graduating class. I hope you know how incredibly proud the staff at McGuffey are of you all. Remember to embrace new experiences, cultivate meaningful relationships, stay connected with loved ones, and remember to always be kind. You are meant for great things. Congratulations, McGuffey Class of 2025.
Mr. President, final in person is Chris Chadwick, South Franklin Township.
Well, I'm not gonna yell at you guys, but I wanna leave you with some thoughts for the end of the night, right? So this Saturday, I hit 20 years of service in the Army National Guard, right? And over my time, I've trained and mentored plenty of young men and women to be leaders when I finally hang up my boots, right? So right now, I'm gonna talk about leadership and what it means to me and what I think it should mean to you as you guys drive home tonight and you think about things for your next session, next month, whenever you guys have it, right? Sometimes leadership means making a hard call, especially when it's uncomfortable. And with all due respect, this board has opportunities to lead. Instead, choose to wait, to table, and avoid. Indecision is a decision, and it has consequences. When leadership hesitates, it's our students who feel it first. It's our teachers left without direction. It's our families left wondering what comes next. In a time when clear vision and firm action are needed, silence or delay doesn't hold us back. It creates more problems down the road. The people in McGuffey didn't elect this board to play it safe. They elect you to lead, to make choices, even uncomfortable ones. Because the truth is, leadership isn't about avoiding conflict. It's about stepping into it with clarity, courage, and conviction, and doing respect for the kids and the families that you're supposed to serve, that I've served this past 20 years. Our district deserves better than stalled conversations and missed opportunities. It deserves leaders who will show up, speak up, and stand firm. Have a great night, guys. Be safe going home.
Mr. President, that concludes the public comment. Thank you, Chief. Yes, sir. At this time, we'll have items for discussion. Ms. Fry, I think you wanted to start.
I think it would be beneficial before we left here to determine what we're doing moving forward, you know, regarding the solicitor. I would like to say that I do not want to waste everybody's time with submitting an RFP. I think if the rest of the board would like to interview the candidate that Mr. Leisure had motioned to be on the agenda this evening, I think that we should just invite her back for an interview, and then the board can decide from there. I was not at the interview when she came. I came late that night. I didn't get to meet her or see her. I would benefit from interviewing her as well. But I did do significant research on her and her firm and the cases she's fought. And she's fought some cases against masking. She's fought some cases to support masking. She's going to, it gives me the impression that she's going to do what the board wants. I intend to watch and listen to more meetings that she has been in to really see how she is. Because minutes say one thing, but body language says another, and that is something I pay attention to often. That would be my suggestion. And that's only because she was, she, she came. I don't know if any of you knew that that was her. I didn't know that was her sitting in, I don't think she, she left, she was. She came. I think it says something that she showed up no matter which way it went, and if she introduced herself to the rest of you or most of you. I would just say, instead of wasting everybody's time and advertising and all of that, we just invite her back to be interviewed by the board as a whole before next month's meeting, and then next month we vote.
I would suggest that we bring back for interview the top three candidates. We scored them during the interviews, so we have those. I think that's only fair. That a choice of one person isn't a choice. I'm just saying, I wouldn't go with her.
So we have two, two options right now that have been presented. One is to bring only Rebecca back and talk to her. The other option is to bring the top three back. Would anybody else like to interject some thoughts? If they're even interested in coming back?
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, if my memory serves correctly, that one priced way out of our budget.
But I don't think that one was one of the top three. I just, maybe what I need to say is review what were our top three scored candidates and ask them back as well. I don't feel that one choice is a choice.
To anyone who applied. The last time, right. I'm okay with that.
I was gonna say, I would prefer that rather than spending money on advertising again.
I think there needs to be some clarification here for transparency. Every interview that I've ever been in at McGuffey, once the numbers are tabulated, the results are given that night, and you discuss and talk about it. When we interviewed solicitors, we did not know when we left that night what the ratings was. We didn't know until a month later. Why? I don't know. But I personally think, excuse me, Mrs. Shingle, please. For transparency reasons, I'm sorry, but that was wrong. Within six months, I don't see anybody changing their mind, but maybe they will. I just wanna move on and stop the charades and the, whatever you wanna call it. But I'd also like to thank Mr. Rubarnik, it's a little different note, for coordinating with the PTOs to serve lunch at the high school, middle school. And I'm ashamed to say that I don't know exactly what all Mr. Rubarnik did do, but I do know that she had plaques made for every teacher and was handed out for teacher appreciation. She must have spent a ton of time with the PTO parents to serve the lunch. There was lunches served at, I believe, Claysville, Joe Walker. There was breakfasts served all week at Joe Walker. And like I say, I apologize for my ignorance for not knowing what all was done. But I can tell you, it's a whole lot more than that's ever been done. And I would just like to thank you publicly, Mrs. Rubarnik. That's a positive. Unfortunately.
I can't take all the credit, because I must say that I wrote on the coattails of the PTO because they are a well-oiled machine, and they were gracious enough to allow the opportunity to collaborate and thank our teachers. So I'm grateful for them, too.
Yes, thank you to the PTO for allowing us to be a part of it.
That was my next thing. Thanks to the PTO parents who served the lunch at middle school, high school, along with served breakfasts, lunch, and a lot of other stuff. I apologize to your PTO parents that our superintendent did not come and thank any one of them for their efforts, nor did our principals. That is highly disturbing when we call ourselves a family. Families eat together. Those poor six ladies expressed their frustration. We did this all for the teachers. Where's the administrators thanking the teachers? I'm sorry, Dr. Oberg, but that was very unprofessional. Those parents took multiple hours. And as Mr. Rubarnik said, I was amazed at what they did, how they did, and all that, not to thank them when they're here. I'll end with that.
I must say, Mr. Wise and Ms. Burdine did, they were a part of the coffee truck and delivery.
And, and they, they did have a big input on the thanking the PTO.
I, I think that Dr. Oberg had sent off some pictures and things and had thanked everyone. And we, as a board, even said to Mrs. Rubarnik, "Thank you when you brought us the example that you just had sitting there. That was very nice." And if I, if we.
Respond to that attack.
Okay. Well, thank you, anyway.
As far as the, what option we're going to go with, Ms. Fry, which one do you recommend? I'm asking you because you brought it up at the beginning.
I'm not opposed to others coming back and interviewing again. There's so much time that goes into this. I know I feel in order for us all to be able to work together more, we do need more time, more committees, more, more time that we can give to this position, working with administration, working with our business administrator, working with who we need to, working with each other.
It does. What he's talked, what she is talking about.
She's talking about process.
Yeah.
She, she wants to know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a valid point.
Yeah.
It's a valid point.
But we could.
Would you be opposed to her coming in and talking to us, though, before then? No, the motion, I mean, we tabled the motion, so the motion goes on to the June meeting.
But we could.
The same motion.
The same motion.
But we could, we could change, we could make a motion to change that.
Here we go.
To be whoever we select after interviews.
My recommendation would be to just leave the motion as it is and have Ms. Hall come back and talk to us, give us the opportunity to talk to her again. And, because that's the only thing that was motioned, was her. And if we don't like what she has to say or whatever, then at that time, we as a board can collaborate and see what we wanna do. If we wanna open it up then for other solicitors to come, but sensitive motion is only for her, I would say that I think the only right thing to do would only ask her to come back and talk.
I thought the, I thought the only reason we were talking about this is because you suggested we decide. Because Dr. Oberg actually said we should talk about it in executive session. And you said, "Let's talk about it." So I thought that was the reason we were talking about it.
But since we tabled the motion, that motion has to be on the next board meeting. So can we just come to an agreement that let's set a date for her to come in? And those board members that, hopefully all of us, will be there. So I'm open to dates. Tuesday?
No, Tuesday's election day.
Oh, yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday won't work. Yeah, not Tuesday, Chad, right?
And not Thursday?
And not Wednesday, right? Yeah. Is Monday too soon? How about Monday? Yeah, this Monday, this Monday.
I have to say, Memorial, am I wrong? Memorial Day is not this.
Two weeks.
Okay. Oh, you know, you all can do whatever, but I am actually gonna be out of town that day. I'll take a nurse to Gettysburg.
On Monday?
On the nineteenth.
Yeah, that's Monday, the nineteenth.
Are we saying that that's a good day?
No.
Well, we would even have to check with Ms. Hall because we don't know what day. How about this? How about we check with Ms. Hall, see what days work for her, and coordinate that with us? Does that sound good and fair? Okay. Because we could set the date, Ms. Hall may say I'm not available.
Right, yeah.
Just as long as we're in agreement on how we're moving forward.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with you, but I think it would give, like Monique, and Ms. Fry didn't have a chance to hear her out, Mr. Grove, myself. So it would give us a chance.
I think she's fairly local, so I hope they're willing to come back.
All right, so we're in agreement with that? All right. So just wanna make an announcement that we are going to hold an executive session for safety reasons.
Do you need a version for that?
Yeah, and see what dates work for her over the next two weeks.
Do we need a motion to go to executive session?
No.
Well, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting and move to executive session, correct?
Need a motion to adjourn the meeting and move to executive session.
And we're moving to executive session for.
For safety report. Yep, that's it.
I just want to clarify because someone just asked me when we are meeting only next month.
Did they just ask?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't tell her the wrong thing. I, it's next month, we're not having another meeting, meeting.
Not schoolwork.
To finish these other items.
No, man.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought.
All right, no problem. All right, I need a motion.
I, I would make a motion to adjourn and return to executive session for the hearing of the safety report. I would also like to discuss litigation, possible litigation.
I would need a second to that.
How can we do that without a solicitor?
Talking about a little bit of age and that.
I mean, unless she's available through the phone like earlier.
Well, if you have another meeting.
You have to. Did we have a second to that?
Oh, I'll second, okay.
Discussion. I don't need it.
I got to get up at two.
How about we, well, we, we had a. I, I would be okay with that. If we had a motion and a second, so we have to vote. So we did have a motion and we did have a second. If that vote fails, then we can make another motion.
Make a motion, we take with that.
Are you, so we all do it tonight, and we're bringing all the way up for now?
No, we have to do it tonight.
No, the safety report. The motion on the board, on the floor right now is to adjourn the meeting and recess to executive se, or go to executive session to discuss the safety report and possible litigation. So I would like to have a vote on that, and if you don't want to do that, just vote no. And then we'll make another motion just to go into executive session for the safety report. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
And if after the safety report, members don't want to stick around for the rest, they could leave, correct?
Well, we wouldn't have anything else.
We won't be coming back.
We wouldn't be coming back. It would just be some safety report.
No, I know, but I'm saying back in executive session, she's going to give his report.
Then that's it. That would be it, but not on this vote here. This vote is.
That's what I'm saying. On this vote here, if we go, if it passes and we go back there and we hear Chief's report, and Mrs. Jackson wants to discuss possible litigation, the board members who don't want to sit in on that possible.
They're free to leave.
Conversation can leave. They're not obligated to stay for that, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
I don't know, I'm just saying that.
Can we just go around and vote real quick?
I was going to say, can we just move along?
We need to vote because there was a motion and a second. I'm sorry. Roll call, Laura.
I know.
No.
Mr. Wornick?
No.
Ms. Shingle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I think we should have an attorney present as well, so it would be enough for five.
Mr. Banadis?
No.
Ms. Frye?
Tell you a motion one more time. I'm so sorry.
To move to, to adjourn the meeting and move to executive session to discuss the safety report and litigation.
No.
Did you say no?
No, that's okay.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting and go to executive session to discuss the safety report.
I check it.
Do we need, do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain, motion carries eight one, meaning adjourns.